Recording in progress.
Yep. Should be right underneath your agenda is the meeting procedures. Okay.
So we are here for our town meeting, so I will call our town meeting to order. Can we just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? You have our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we have to have a moderator for our town meeting, so I'll take some nominations from the floor, from the council. Okay, thank you. We have a nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close. We'll close the nominations and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved. So our eligibility to vote in this town meeting is any person who is an elector of such town, any citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who jointly or severally, who is liable to the town for taxes assigned against him or her on assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of such town. That's a reference to Connecticut, General Statute, Section 7-6. And now we... Kate, you can read the legal notice.
A special meeting in electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin will be held at the Burlington Hall, Council Chambers, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at 6:45 PM for the following purposes. During the fiscal year 2024 budget process, staff submitted a capital budget request of After carefully considering the items on the list and considering staff prioritization of the list, the Board of Finance included $1,070,000, the first tier, in the budget they submitted to the town council. In advance of the second referendum, the town council removed all proposed capital funding from the budget. As a result, the adopted general fund FY '24 budget did not include any capital expenditures. This proposal is to appropriate general fund unassigned fund balance in fiscal year 2024 in anticipation of the fiscal year 2023 general fund surplus fund. $30,000 for computer equipment, lease modems. $200,000 for police vehicles. $140,000 for school vans. $195,000 for school cameras, district-wide. $200,000 for block stab on grade groundwater at Berlin High School. $50,000 for ballistic blocks. $275,000 for a large dump truck body replacements. $65,000 for a pickup truck. $75,000 to resurface the baseball tennis course at the Berlin High School. $80,000 for a track snow machine. $200,000 to replace equipment at the Little People's Playground. $50,000 for bridge replacements at Timberland. $200,000 for town clerk assessor office renovations. Approve in a fiscal year 2024 non-budget appropriation of $1,780,000 for capital items. It is at Berlin, Connecticut, this 26th day of July, 2023.
Thank you, Kate. So now we need a resolution to come before the town meeting? Great. Yeah, and we need a second on that? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved. So now we have our discussion on our resolution. And this is Kate ready town meeting, so we have our folks in the audience. So we'll open up to the audience first. So, and just so you understand, what we're really voting for here is not any of the individual projects. It's just a vote on the dollar amount, the $1,780,000 for the whole list, which will just basically give us the authority as we go through the projects tonight. We may not get through all of them tonight. To approve or disapprove, we can approve nothing and spend no money, but we could approve the full $1,780 million if we pass this resolution tonight. So the money just kind of stays. I think it's in the fund balance, and it will stay there until we vote each project through, and then that, obviously, that money, whatever we approve, will be allocated to that specific project as we work through them. So that's what we're voting on. But if you wanted to talk about individual projects during this meeting, that's fine, or we could...
So the town meeting will vote on it?
Correct.
Vote on approval and the money?
The money. The funding, correct.
The funding. It may go less.
Yes.
So that's okay. And then the town council will take it up during their council meeting?
They could speak then, right, about their projects? Or no?
Who, the staff?
No, like, people that want to talk about...
Talk now?
Okay, we'll have you talk now about individual projects. So then when we get to it on our agenda, we can, you know, certainly use your input and the input we have in our package. So if anybody's here to talk about any individual projects, now would be your time. If not, we certainly will be discussing... Yes? Joan? Name and address, please.
Hopefully, this is on, and you can all hear me. My name is Joan Veely. My residency is at 1424 Orchard Road here in the wonderful town of Berlin. And I looked over some of these items that were on, and I'll leave it to the wisdom of the council. However, I have questions that follow through. Number one would be $140,000 for school vans. Now, I don't know, as a taxpayer, if these are replacement vans or they're new vans. I mean, as far as a citizen in this town, I always assumed that vans, whether they're buses or whatever, would be, or for special needs, would be handled by New Britain Transit. So I'm wondering why we're spending $140,000 on school vans. Second item, $200,000 for block slab on grade groundwater at Berlin High School. This is a place that's just been renovated, and so I ask, I don't understand, $200,000 for a block slab on grade water. $50,000 for ballast blocks. And I'm assuming that those are the security, like cones, that they put in the high school?
No. I think they're on the roof for the solar panels.
All right.
We have some questions there, too.
Again, I have some questions that I'd like to have about those, because I really do, as a taxpayer, want to understand. And the last item would be for $80,000 for a track snow machine. And I did Google what a track snow machine is, and I think it has, like, tank tracks on it. It goes along, and it's hooded, and some of them seat two people, some of them seat four people. But I'm wondering, with the snow that we've had in Berlin, why would we need a track snow machine? So I just, I question what's driving that need? And when the hell we would ever use it? And so... And then we have the $200,000 for the replacement equipment at Little People's Playground, which I guess is the playground at Willard, Mr. Mayor?
I think that's the one right down his street here. Right, right on the corner? Yeah, right?
Oh, okay. So I just want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck. And $200,000 seems to be a lot, and I'm hoping that, you know, we could spend less money and achieve the same goal. Those are my concerns as a citizen, and I thank you for your time, and I thank the council and the town mayor.
Appreciate your input.
All right. You're welcome.
I just had a question. Donna Beach was not able to hear. She said she's... Did you tell her? Okay.
Peter, are you having any problems hearing? Peter?
No, not at all. As long as they're speaking into the mic, there's no problem.
Did you text her and tell her? Oh, okay. Okay, so hopefully she'll figure out. We'll take a break after this anyway. So anyone else from the public that wishes to speak about any of these projects and the topic of our town meeting? Yes, sir. Come on up. Welcome. How you doing?
William Richards, 811 Orchard Road. And I'd like to support at least the $50,000 of bridge replacement at Timberland. It seems to be a serious problem that emergency vehicles would not be able to go over the bridges in case of emergency. So I think $50,000 is probably too low, actually, from what I've heard as far as the pricing of the bridges. Also, I question the $200,000 to replace the equipment at Little People's Playground. Seems like an exorbitant amount. I don't know what needs to be replaced, but I think it is excessive.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Anyone else in the audience? Want to speak? Yeah, Donna.
Donna Bovey, 85 St. Paulview Drive. So just with the concerns about Little People, some chair of Park and Rec. And I was going to speak at audiences, citizens, which I guess I might have to do again, but I am going to urge the council to include the $200,000 for Little People's. It's been approved by the Finance Committee. Quite frankly, it's been on the list for many years. Very old equipment at Little People's. Feel free, go up and see it. It needs full replacement. In addition, there was other playground, the Willard School that was mentioned before. As you look at Willard, on the left side, there's a playground. It's not Friendship Place, which is on the right side. This is on the left side. That one is the oldest set of playground equipment that we have. We've been turning over the school's playgrounds over the last, you know, five years or so. This is the last one to be replaced that was not approved by the Finance Committee. However, if there's any money available at any point in time, that would be great. It's a smaller set of configurations, about 175 grand. Quite frankly, we won't know the cost until you go out to bid. And you have to do that once it's approved. No one's going to bid on any package or any capital until you have the approval from the town and the legislative boards. So it's placeholder. Hey, if it's less, great, but quite frankly, we've looked at costs. You know, we're very hopeful, because we've had it for a couple of years, that with inflation, we can cover it. But we're, you know, we're really not sure until we go out to bid. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else from the audience? Any projects on the list? Going once, going twice? We'll close that, and we have discussion just amongst the council. I know, obviously, it's coming to us on our agenda. Again, this is just the approval to allow us to obviously have authority to spend up to the $1,780,000. Whatever we approve is what we will spend, if it's a dollar, or if it's $1,780,000, anywhere in between, so... Any discussion on the council? No? Oh, no discussion, just... Okay, so now we can vote on the resolution. Everybody in the room votes, right?
Anyone who's a citizen?
Yeah, any non-citizens here of Berlin?
Yes.
Of Berlin? What, Kate? Okay, you can't vote, Kate. You can't vote. All the citizens may vote, so all those in favor of the resolution as discussed, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the vote carries. And the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. We'll just take a little break before we start our council meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Kate. Yeah, so we have our discussion coming up. Silly me.
Okay, all right. I'm going to sign off. I'm going to go home and have dinner.
Stick around.
No. Well, listen, on Thursday night, you can stick around. I'll probably be here at friggin' midnight. By the way, how about computers for PNC? It wasn't ours.
All right, Donna's on. Do you want to continue? Do you want Donna's on? She was. Where did she go? There, she's on. You want to start the meeting?
Is it important for me to get up and on this, citizens, and talk about the same thing? Because now you're going to talk about each project?
You want me to pause? If you want, you can go.
Okay, folks, we will call our town council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call? Roll call, Kate.
Councilor Tola?
Here.
Mayor Fosinski?
Here.
Councilor Peonesa?
Here.
Councilor Rizzo? Councilor Rosso?
Here.
Councilor Beach?
I'm here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will go on to our audience of citizens. If anyone wants to speak to us about anything on our agenda, or if something's bothering you about something else in the town, you can speak to us about that. Yes, sir, you're first on the list, and here you are.
Liam Mitchell, 1005 Kensington Road. This is something that's been frustrating most of the Berlin Water District for years now. Now it's gotten to the point where it's starting to hold up the Mattabasset District. We've been turned down three years in a row because of excess INI. State is now trying to break the arm of the town of Berlin for something that Kensington Water District, which I have the reports right here that I want to hand to the town to show that this has been going on for three years.
Hang on one second, Liam. What's...
It's Peter. I went and muted him.
Pardon? We got to mute you, Peter.
What's... That's the reports showing that we've been, for the last three years...
Yes.
They have been submitting to the town of Kensington and Worthington. Worthington isn't as bad as Kensington. Kensington's off the scale. They're like 40 violations. But it's gotten to the point where, in this last year, they purchased from the town of New Britain 300,000 gallons of water and sold 195. And the rest of that is going into our meter in Baxter. There, it's only supposed to be, at the most, 700,000 gallons. We're getting 3 to 4 million in that meter. It's not supposed to be there. That's all INI.
All infiltrating into the system?
All infiltrating in the system, because as anybody that gets a bill, your bill for sewer is rated for what your water bill is. But for the town of Berlin, when it gets in that pipe, they just come to Ray and say, pay the bill.
Mattabasset.
Mattabasset. That's all they care about.
Right.
They don't, we've tried to split it off. We've even voted in our council to kick everybody else off the lines because they're not complying with the EPA, the DEP, and their lines are 40 years out of date. It puts them over 100 years old. So there is no infrastructure that they're planning in the next five years that we know of.
That's both of the other water districts?
Both districts. They don't have anything on the books to repair the problem. Like I say, most of the violations are Worthington. And I've been told, or Kensington, I've been told many times that Kensington's the most efficient, and they should buy us out, meaning the Berlin Water District.
Yeah.
They have approximately $5 million worth of assets. We're upwards of 50. So, but the point here is they're not managing what they have, and there's a handful of people that, in previous years, used to run the town and also ran the districts. So it was very favorable stuff going on. The point here is, is that it's gotten out of hand.
The other two districts beside us, so all three of us go through that Baxter meter?
No, mostly Kensington.
Okay. That's a majority?
Maybe 20%.
Oh, 20% of, is the Berlin Water District?
Right.
And then the rest, and then some of it's Worthington, too?
No.
Oh, it's mainly Kensington? Okay.
But they have a clay system. The pipes are six foot long. They've got a joint every six feet. It was fine back when grease was put together. It's the same pipe system, but now it's, it's segregated so bad that Mattabasset was concerned about this. Because I raised some concern that normally, in my industrial park, which has a 20-plus inch line behind it, normally it's in the spring that I can't flush my toilets. This year, it started in December of the previous year. So it raised a flag. Now, Mattabasset has put in a metering system on the 60-inch line down on Demming Road. It is shown that just this year alone, the INI went up 3%. The five years previous, it only went up 5%. So it's expediting. Okay? Now, in the management of this, Ray does a lot of digging, and he gets a lot of flack. But, you know, there's just a few highlights that I want to bring out.
Is that what this is? Is this...
That's the report from the DEP that is telling the Mattabasset that, look, you're going to have to do something about Kensington, or we're not going to give you a permit. They've held it up for three years.
This is from the U.S. Environmental Agency?
Well, DEP, too.
And State?
And State, yeah, both on here. That Kensington is supposed to fix the problem?
They just prolong it, and they don't do nothing. They ignore us. They've ignored us for the last five years that I know of.
Yeah.
Okay? So the, you want to ask...
I mean, just understand it. So the Mattabasset is in danger of losing their permit because the people contributing to their flow are not obeying the regulations?
No, you don't understand. They won't give us the permit. They've stopped, give...
So they stopped the permit?
They've stopped the permit because this has been going on for 30 years. There was other reports that I didn't get...
But Mattabasset has held up because Kensington's lack of action?
Absolutely. And between Worthington isn't much far behind. But I'll give you an example of what goes on. Skinner Road, there's a big development there. Must be 50 houses. For the last 30 years, they have been getting free sewer. And Kensington knows this because they're sending the bill to these people. Well, if you notice that on, where Christian Lane starts, right there in the four corners where the GFW is, there's an extra big corner lot right there. Well, there used to be a pump station there, which used to meter this stuff. Well, they took it out when they did the Safeway, or the stop and shop. So that flow from all of that is going straight into the sewer system, and that's causing us to say that's INI. And what it is, is it's the 2,900 people that always get this bill. It's not the other two districts that get the bill. Every time that we find something wrong in the system, it always boils down to the Berlin Water District pays the bill. Last year, it's close to $1 million. We cannot continue this. We've got East Berlin we got to deal with that we've had on the books for three years now that we want to do.
Do we get any reimbursement from Kensington?
There's only what they bill. Only what they bill. They say we're the most efficient, and we don't...
Oh, so we're paying for this overflow, basically?
Berlin Water District.
Berlin's paying for the overflow, yeah. We're not getting the reimbursement on that, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It was estimated...
Yeah.
That the sewer alone that's been going on is pretty close to 500 to $1 million a year. That we're losing revenue.
Right.
Just in the Skinner problem, Skinner development. Okay? The Baxter Avenue, we're working diligently to get a meter in there, because, like I say, it's not supposed to be over 700, and we're getting 3 to 5, depending on... And we got pictures of the pipe literally flooded the whole pit, which they estimate is close to 5 million. So...
Yeah. I know, I mean, I...
It's all INI.
Yeah, I know, Liam. I know, we've been trying to work with the two districts, as you know, but it's not easy.
Well, they've done the same thing to us. They just ignore us.
Yeah.
That's why we voted a couple of years ago, to say that's enough. You get off our lines. Give them a year, and that would be it. MDC did it years ago.
Yeah, Mattabasset won't bill them directly? On...
They don't want nothing to do with them.
They won't do it?
New Britain doesn't want it. They tried to go the back way with New Britain. Their INI is so bad that nobody wants to deal with them. You have to understand, you got $110 million project that in seven years became garbage. The idea here is, is to treat that water, not send it out in the Connecticut River.
Right.
So you spent that kind of money, and we're just barely keeping up with it. Okay? So there's, there's health violation, that some of these in the Worthington area need more flow, that they're troubling the health of the people. that they're, they're in troubling the health of the people, meaning that there's enough, not enough flow.
And just for, for the record, just so people understand, I know probably most folks here do, but some may not online or wherever if they listen to this, that we have the Berlin Water Control, which is the town-owned water department. We have Worthington Ridge, which is a separate quasi-government entity. We have no control over it or authority over it. And they have the Kensington Fire District, which has, is their own authority, which has, have been granted since the 1920s. So they're created by the legislature. Berlin has no control over it, the Town of Berlin, other than our Berlin Water Control, where some of us are in that, some are in the Kensington Fire District, some are in the Worthington Fire District. But the three of us or the two of the other two, it's been an ongoing battle, at least since I've been here, to try and get us all on the same page and fix the problems, and I know you've been working on it. Certainly Ray's been looking at it for years, working on it, but we, it's very difficult because without them working, us working together, we don't have any direct authority over those other two water districts. That's just, you know, where we're at, but.
Well, the whole thing about it is if we don't consolidate and make it under one roof, there's no way that Worthington has the clout or the money. And Kensington as well, they're pretty isolated. They're, they're, they're not going to have much more customers, they've got 3,400 customers.
Together, or but, Kensington? Kensington's 34?
1,200 for.
And what's the, what's the Berlin one?
2,900.
29, in the middle, okay.
But, so this issue is, is not, it's, it's got to come to an end. I mean, there's, I, I fully wanted to, to take this a lot slower.
Yep.
And take where the, where the INI is, what INI is. But since I got that report from the, from the Mattabasset, it blew my whole two-week thing in a row right out the door because this is, this is something that they just got turned down on and we, we need as a town to say, "That's enough." And, and remember this, they could shut the doors tomorrow. They do not provide anything. We provide, all the sewer pipes, when I say us, meaning the Town of Berlin, supplies the water, Worthington and the sewer. Kensington gets their water from New Britain and we get some water from New Britain. We all tie into all the systems to make it work right, to keep the flow going.
Right.
But they could shut down tomorrow and we would be two, 1.5% for the taxpayers in those areas, wouldn't have to pay the bloody tax. Myself, I get billed $50 for Worthington, okay? I get a $3,000 bill for taxes. Now, $50 a month doesn't add up to a whole lot. But I'd pay twice, three times what my bill would be just in taxes.
No, it's, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, we've, we know there's a problem. We, and, you know, we'll talk some more with Erosian, our town attorney, who's been working with them. We are, we're trying to work on a plan because we don't obviously want them to fail because East Berlin failed, we had the other water district in East Berlin years ago, they failed and of course it all became the responsibility of the Town of Berlin, which we had to spend a lot of money on, right, fixing up things.
What I'm passing around right now is their response to anonymous writer complaining about Ray trying to straighten this stuff out.
No.
He sent it to the, to the governor, they sent it to the Attorney General. Obviously, they didn't sign it. But just to give you another example of how far out it is, we have a, a customer in town that sells tennis shoes for a living. They have one toilet. They've been in that Strickland or Strick Park for two years. Every quarter she gets a bill somewhere in the neighborhood of $17 to $20 per quarter. Starts building next door, the plumber hooks up to her meter. She's got pictures of it. She's got two years, it's $17 to $20 a month, or per quarter. Goes to $800 in three weeks. Joe, like they already says, "No, you got to pay the bill." She's been fighting him for a year now, okay?
Joe is with?
With Worthington and Kensington.
And both, Ray's in both.
And Bristol, he has three different jobs and I don't know how he does it. Ray can't even keep up with the one he's got and I think he's got a lot more experience. But it's, it's just frustrating that, that we can't get anything done.
I, I know, well, I know.
That's your answer, you have it in front of you of what, what we get all the time from them. I'm sure you get the same thing, but next, next couple of weeks I'll have a lot more and we'll take this a little slower.
And we'll keep, we have been trying to work with them. It hasn't got, gotten us too far, as you have said.
We haven't heard a word from them, we don't, we don't even hear a word from them.
But we'll have to ask Attorney DiNofrio, but I know we've tried to work, and are we doing a plan to, are we doing, I thought we were going to do a plan to study the, right?
We're doing an evaluation of the system.
Yeah, we're evaluating the system, that's kind of our next step.
Yeah, but you have to get permission from them to do the evaluation of the system.
Right, I'm not sure we, I don't, I don't think we've had that yet. Have we, I don't think we, did we get the permission from them? No, we didn't.
They won't give us permission.
We did not, you're correct, yeah. So, yeah, I, I hear you, Liam.
So the next thing is they got to be kicked off our lines. Nobody will take them because their infrastructure is bad. So this, this is something that the town manager and attorney have got to get off, off their chairs and do something about it because.
Well, we've been doing it, but.
We've been pushing this for the last couple of years as a committee and they just push back and say, "Well, it's not really the time to do it." Well, we've already been in court by now, which would have straightened this issue out.
Is the town in danger of being shut off by Mattabasset? Has Mattabasset refused to?
That is what they're exploring because it would be just like us shutting off Kensington and Worthington. But at the same time, this can be cured very simply. The people can go and vote and say, "We want to consolidate," one meeting and it's done.
I understand, but most people don't understand there's three water systems in our metropolis. But what I'm afraid of, when Mattabasset says, "Well, we can't get our permit, so Berlin's going to have to find another venue to get rid of their sewage, then what do we do?"
Well, that is something that is, is fast coming as being on the board myself.
We're lumped in with the, with the problem.
We're lumped in and we're looked at and they go to Ray to pay the bill because he's got the finances to do it, they don't care. They just pay what, what they want to pay and we're left with the rest.
Yeah, I know, it flows through us, so, yeah.
Well, I'm letting you know, it went up 3% this year alone and we got the meters to prove it, okay? So last year it was a million, you might be looking at a million and a half.
Do you, do you want this back?
No, that is for you to keep because I don't think you've got any record of that.
No. All right.
That's a lot of serious stuff.
Keep this stuff, yes, sir.
Thank you.
See you next meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Liam. Okay, audience and citizens, anyone, anyone else for anything? I'm sorry, yes, there are, yes, there are, sorry. Samantha, come on up. Hi, how are you?
I'm Samantha Sullivan, 18 Garden Drive. I'm just here to advocate for town parks and Parks and Rec. I know there's some extra capital and they're debating going, what the money's going to go to. And I just want to, just tell everyone again how important it is and how far behind our parks are. I know it's like a silly thing in comparison to all the other problems that are going on in the world and in town, however, there are, I don't know if everyone is aware of like, for example, there's a huge opiate crisis in our town. I went to my 20th funeral last week for my husband's little brother, who is a generation behind us, he lost like another friend, literally 20, in Berlin. And it's kind of not talked about in town. It starts when kids are young. What can we do to keep them occupied, keep them doing safe things, keep them, just as everyone knows, like keep, just keep kids having fun, doing things safely. And our town has 40-year-old, 50-year-old, 60-year-old parks, it seems. They're just like, I went and I looked through every town, every town in Connecticut with like a similar mill rate, similar size, and every single town had like a modern park, at least one, most of them had more, like, so I know, like, we don't have as many resources as some towns like New Britain, they have paid workers and paid mayors and they get all these grants and everything, it's fine. But we still don't have an excuse compared to these other towns. And I'm just really, 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 really hoping that you guys will agree that our town needs some of that money towards the parks and even more Parks and Rec programs. If you look in the catalogs compared to every other town, there's so many more options, arts programs, more dance programs, more sports programs, more, just, it's like depressing as a parent with young kids because I go to Cromwell and Newington and Southington and Rocky Hill and I'm spending all my money and I'm like not that high class and I'm still willing to like spend my money in these other towns. And then I go there and then I go out to lunch in these other towns and then, oh, there's a store there, well, I'll just go spend it here. So we could be like making money in our town also, so.
So how about this for a suggestion, because we've been talking about this, doing a splash pad and updating, I mean, we just had this discussion the other day and with Park and Rec and Woody and different folks, so splash pad, we, we just started. We, we're talking about it and that's, that's the start of it. Splash pad at, at the Worthington Ridge Park.
Yes.
Kind of update that park, put the splash pad behind it, plenty of parking front and back. So that is now sort of, just kind of got incubated the other day, but we're all, you know, I think probably headed down that road to hopefully get that done.
Think that would actually realistically be a thing?
Yes.
Oh, that would be amazing.
Yeah, because, because, because we're, yeah, it'll be a thing. We'll do it because we're probably, you know, I mean, that's up to Park and Rec, but the, the East Berlin pool is just, you know, really damaged seriously, right? It's all, I mean, and Donna Boe is here, our chairman and chairwoman, she could explain it better than I, but, you know, that's probably not going to get continued. We, we'll keep Perceval, but that's why we kind of want to do, we'd rather put the money into a splash pad, a nice fun thing for kids to run through and centrally in town, you know, where Worthington Ridge is pretty centrally located for everybody. So that's initial discussion. I know, I think, and Donna could speak for herself, she can get up here. But, you know, we're, we're interested in, in doing that. I think that's the direction we want to do for that, that one issue, yeah, that's a.
That's great, I always, we always said.
A move forward, as, as you have demonstrated. But, you know, we do have a lot of great fields in town, we have a lot of open space. We, we do have a lot of things in Berlin, I mean, we really do.
And there's a lot of potential there.
Yeah, yeah, and we're working on some other stuff.
Could I get your perspective on your thoughts around things? Because the splash pads and all of these parks are really, the kids age out of that at a certain point. So what would be your thinking around, what are the needs for the middle schoolers? And that's where you really start to lose the kids because there's no more, there's no after-school programs. The Y program ends at fifth grade at all the elementaries. I'm, I'm in education, by the way, so this is something that I care about a lot also with you and I'm a parent here in town. So what are your thoughts about what the needs would be for those middle school kids? And that's where you really start to lose the kids to experimentation with drugs and whatnot, if they're not involved in sports and activities after school. And the UPB program, I think, at the Berlin High School does a fantastic job. We need something like that for those middle-aged kids, you know, the, the kids in the middle, you know, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and that's where they start to make those decisions. What path are they going down? You know, are they going to go down the right path or are they going down this other path? And parents have to work and the kids are going home to empty houses. And, and middle school lets out at 2 o'clock on top of it all. So you're talking about three hours of time before mom and dad get home and there's a lot of trouble that can happen in those three hours and we have no after-school program for them. What are your thoughts? I mean, you obviously have given this a lot of thought, I'm just curious what you're seeing other towns do. My children are very small, my professional experiences with high school.
My children are small too, but I, I have nieces and nephews and I was a teenager and my neighbors who I'm close with are teenagers. Definitely, I mean, there's, we don't have a Boys and Girls Club. It'd be great if, if Berlin was more open to partnering with New Britain or Meriden or all these other towns that have these programs. Like even like the Head Start, which I get as little kids, but like I talk to parents about like preschools and no one even considers or knows that like we can, the Berlin kids can go to the Meriden Head Start. There's, they, they take three towns and Berlin is one of them. I feel like Berlin feels that they're not a, a part of these other communities and we kind of are and there's still all these other opportunities that are missed. So definitely, I, I'm not in the school system, so I don't know how to hook up with them, but Boys and Girls Clubs and more Parks and Rec programs, I would volunteer, like I'm so busy and I have no time, but I, I would totally volunteer a class. You have to be up with the times, right? I mean, kids are into whatever music they like and they don't think it's cool to do sports, some of them, you know? And those are the kids that are like kind of at risk, that don't want to play an instrument, that don't want to join, you know, Taekwondo or something like that. So those are the ones that are mostly at risk and boredom and just grouping together, that's where the experimentation comes along. And I know there's a group in town, I don't know, forget it, just there's, you know, we have to get them interested, get the kids' point of view, what do the kids want? You know, that's what we, I don't know, I'm not a teenager anymore. What do the kids want? That's what they should really be asking, but that's a great idea, I love that you even asked that, so that's good.
Yeah, this is something I would like to talk with you, you know, outside of this forum, you know, get some more thoughts from you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, we need to figure out what to do. But I, but I, the only thing I will say to you is, back to the drug problem, that's everywhere. I mean, you know that, that's everywhere.
I know.
And, and it's not, it's certainly just not in Berlin, I, you know, it's, I mean, 30 years in DEA. It's in LA, it's New York, it's Berlin, it's Rocky Hill, it's, it's everywhere. And we got a lot, you know, it helps, certainly what you're talking about, yes, to get them in the right direction. But I saw so many kids when oxies first came out that, you know, I mean, don't get me stirred on the whole thing, but I mean, heroin, opioids were always kind of the older person's drug, like 20s and up. Once the oxies came out and the fentanyl now and all the other stuff that's out there, it's come down to the teenagers, which opioids were never a teenage problem, ever, historically in the US. So yes, we have a major, major problem with it, no doubt. I, I, I don't, I don't think, I wish we could figure out the cure for it or figure out.
Ignoring it though is.
Oh, we can't ignore it. Well, well, and we ignore it a lot, we ignore it all coming across the border and I don't, you know, I, we don't, you know, we can talk offline about a million things, but, but, I mean, it's ignored many, many places, you know, over, over the years. But we do, you know, we're just worried about our little town right now. And yeah, if we can make it better for our young people, certainly the middle schoolers as they get older, right? There does seem to be a gap there, right? They don't play sports, there's plenty of sports in Berlin.
Sure, but.
But not every, that's not for everybody and that's, you know, the point taken, but. And I'll let, you know, possibly tonight, well, Donna's here, she can talk about some of the programs if people aren't aware of them, but.
I know they're limited.
We could do more, we could do more. And hopefully if we could save, you know, one or two or everybody from horrible situations that are going on out there, that'd be good, yes, Charlie?
I can put an old guy perspective.
You can put that on there, yes, same here, same here, yes.
Everybody's chasing the almighty dollar, people, both parents are working it. The most important investment you can make is time and your children. You got to make that child feel important and spend the time with them, know where your kid is. I worked with the Boy Scouts in town for years, it was a great program, it seems to be dying off now. We did a lot of things. And I see so many parents pull up in front of the meeting and dump the kid out. They couldn't wait to get rid of the kid so they could go do whatever they do and somebody else watch the kid. Be with your child, spend the time and know what they're doing. Because half of these things could be stopped if you just knew what the kid was doing.
I know, but so many people have to work, the dad's got to work in the morning, the mom's got to work.
You got to have that new car, you got to have that big screen TV.
Not even, you know how much mortgage rents are and mortgages are now? It's tough, but I know.
It's tough on everybody, but unfortunately, the cure starts at home.
Sure.
That is part of it.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
We'll work on it. Thank you so much. You want to, yeah, just, that'd be a good follow-up and then, I, I know, I know, are you next on the list? Yeah, yeah, let Donna, yeah.
So Donna Boe, you know, 85 St. View Drive, chairperson of Parks and Rec and I appreciate all your comments and took some notes. So I would tell everybody, in fact, we have a meeting, September meeting is next Thursday night, 6:00 PM at Board of Ed Office, but in October, we're going to have our meeting at Hubbard School. And we're actually going to be talking about. And we're actually going to be talking about how we get this communicated because quite frankly, the papers don't help you and things like this. But you know, I know Crystal's here, there's a Moms Groups in town, so you know, we wanted them to talk. But October 12th, 6:00 at Hubbard School, we welcome everybody to talk about what programs people are looking for. We really wanted to talk about Demor Dinda Pool, give some background on what happened because there was a little bit of backlash, you know, when we had to close it down because supervisory problems or not being able to get enough supervisors for the lifeguards. And then behind is the capital that's needed to repair the decking, the pool. It's probably not money well spent, but we'll leave that for another discussion. But what, you know, what are other options to do in that area? And then, you know, and as the mayor spoke about splash pad, that's great. You talk about middle-aged schools. We're open to ideas. We need people to give ideas. Our staff is extremely limited for Parks and Rec. We don't have the staff in Newington. We're not the size of Newington, you know, recognized and all that. But Cromwell, similar staff, you know, for Parks Rec programs. But if there's other programs and if there's volunteers to help us out, we'd love to hear from you. So October 12th, we need everybody there at the meeting to give us ideas, okay?
Thank you, Donna. Crystal?
Hi, Crystal Vianney, 28 Glenbrook Road. I just got my voice back today. Well, Sam basically said everything that we needed to say. I guess just to add on to that, I wanted to mention that, yeah, when we were talking about the drug problem, what the middle school and stuff, I think pushing on early childhood is really important because that's when we're building the foundation for these kids. Having the parks where parents can get together and their kids can learn social, emotional, learning to be friends and you learn a lot. And they say if you don't know how to teach your kid how to read, that's fine, just believe in them. That's all you have to do and that's comforting to me because not everybody's a teacher and not everybody knows how to get kids involved. But you know how to read a book and you know how to draw a picture and you can just be silly and just having interactions with people. So that's all I wanted to say. Really happy to hear that there's something that's gonna, I hope it's not going to get taken back though. I'm feeling happy about that.
The splash pad?
Uh, yeah.
No.
That's a thing?
We're going to do it.
Okay, that's wonderful. I'm very happy to hear that it's even Worthington Ridge. Little Peoples, is that?
Little Peoples is over here, so there's just the Worthington, I don't know what they call the Worthington. Community, they do the community, community playground. So we'll kind of fix that one up and then add the splash pad. I mean, we got a long, a little ways to go, but I think everybody's in favor, Park and Rec and we'll get there.
Great, and then as far as you were talking about suggestions and some of the things that I had in mind, I'll actually just email you some of the things that I have in mind. But I think that's all I really have to say. I just wanted to be in support of what we've been hoping for and I know, oh, that there's lots of moms who want to be here. But of course, it's Parents Club Night, so they're trying to help schools and some people couldn't come. So they care and they want to be here. I almost forgot, I was home with a sick kid, but Sam's like, hey, you coming? I'm like, no, it's tomorrow. She's like, no, it's not. So we're busy and, you know.
Sure. Thank you for coming, yeah. Okay, we're still in our audience of citizens. Is there anyone else wants to speak about any, any issue? Anybody online? Oh. A minute, Leon, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta go. Yeah, we gotta go. Les?
Liam Mitchell, 1005 Kensington Road. I just wanted to make a comment about the zoning issue about the 20 homes going in on one acre that is presently being thrashed around. You know, it's funny that somebody hands you the piece of paper to hang yourself with. You know, if they want it so bad, I think that we should let them be responsible for the deaths of people that are going to be on this property and what problems are going to be arose from putting in such a high concentration area, not to mention no parking, safety issues, police. Let them flip the bill instead of the town.
No, that's, yeah, I mean, that's on the planning and zoning agenda, so open public hearings, so we can't really get into that. But I, you know, understood. Anyone else on anything else online? Anybody raising their hands?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Joe? Oh, yes, Joe.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm getting feedback, I'm sorry. I just wanted to brief the council that Marie Phelan today received confirmation that funds are in the process of being transferred over to US Bank Trust for the $34 million. My last meeting in August with you, I mentioned that we had a second private investor who was stepping up in that process and coming to a conclusion. So I just wanted to give the council a heads up that that money should be present in our account by Wednesday of next week.
Okay, that's, that's separate from the, what we're talking about, folks, is the senior housing project that we're trying to build over by Percival Field there. And we've been through a lot of, you know, issues with this, getting this project going. A lot of it not on the town. State and federal government have changed descriptions. They don't like senior housing, that you can't get funding. It's just on and on, it's been a long, long time unfortunately. But now as we get here, Joe.
Yes, yes.
I hear what you're saying, but I see nothing happened with the last $34 million, I have to tell you. And I still have not seen, at least me personally, I don't think anyone in the council has or the town manager or the town attorney, whatever happened to the first $34 million that Wells Fargo never came through with. And there's two different answers. One, it got lost in the Fedwire system and to this day, nobody knows what happened to $34 million, highly unlikely.
Highly unlikely.
But, but we never got an answer other than then the second email, right, was that you, the gentleman, you had a name in that email from Wells Fargo, decided to pull out of the investment. But we still apparently don't know, or I guess today we had a third answer possibly that he's been, has a family problem, but he works for Wells Fargo. I got to imagine there's more than one person working for Wells Fargo that could.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not putting any faith in Wells Fargo at this point in time.
But Joe, Joe, but we have no explanation. We had a closing, we had a special meeting to close on that deal and, and we never got an answer what happened to the money.
Correct.
Never. From your attorneys, which I find as an attorney myself disgusting, they have a fiduciary duty, even representing you, whatever you're telling them, they need to check into things too and which they haven't done anything from what I could see. And I don't know where the, there's no.
Like I said.
And there's no explanation, Joe, none whatsoever. Do we have a contact? We need a contact from Wells Fargo that I want to talk to the contact, Arroche wants to and our town attorney wants to speak to.
Yes.
Because we can't go further, we can't go one step further till we talk to Wells Fargo and find out what happened. We had a closing that was never funded.
Correct.
In what, six weeks now it's been?
Wells Fargo failed to perform according to their agreement. That's where we're at. I will, as I spoke to Arroche today, I will forward him the contact information to the individual who's responsible for that. To this day, he keeps claiming that it's still in process, so you know, that's all I can tell you.
Okay, well, again, we're not scheduling another closing and we're not doing anything until we get an answer from the first closing that we had and we had to pull everything back and end it, right?
Understand.
I mean, if you're sitting in our, you're sitting in our shoes here, but you know, we got to this point. We're all very happy, we hope it was going through, but there's just no credible answer to what happened at a closing. When you have a closing, you know, all the documents were prepared, everything was good. It just never got funded and it's still, you know, obviously never got funded. But there's no explanation, nothing. The money just evaporated into thin air. $34 million from a major bank.
Yeah, I have nothing to give you on that. So as soon as I have something, I will, I'm forwarding Arroche the contact information to that individual. You can feel free to reach out to him and.
We will.
Have a discussion.
But how could you not know when you're the one getting the financing? And your attorneys never checked into it either? I mean, you hired a law firm, a major law firm in Hartford that is well-respected as far as I know and I've done some business with them myself, but.
Correct.
They never checked into it as you're, as representing the Berlin Housing Authority? I mean, we spent thousands of dollars on this closing, thousands of dollars on this project, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to this point. Berlin Housing Authority funding, which is still public funding and money just, the day of the closing, no money. Six weeks later, two months later, no money and no explanation. I mean, you got to look at, sitting in our shoes, right?
Yeah, I'm saying both. So like I said, we have a law firm that's looked into this and they've received no explanation as to why the funds were not performed. So like I said, we've gone on to Plan B.
Well, there's no Plan B until we answer Plan A.
Correct.
We can't, we can't go, there'll be no closing scheduled. We're not going down this road again until we, and if, you know, our next option is really to look for another developer to put up the senior housing. Unfortunately, I just speak for myself here, but everyone else that's been involved and I've lost a lot of faith in Berlin Housing Authority Board of Directors to get it done. We, I thought we were there, had a special meeting. It was, I mean, we were, you know, you told us it's urgent, we have the special meeting. We did it and still didn't go through. We never got that far, so I thought we were, we had crossed the finish line, but we haven't. And $34 million, you know, having done closings myself back in the day, doesn't just evaporate.
I get it.
On a closing. Your mortgage, you know, when you go to get your mortgage and close on your house, the money doesn't evaporate, it's somewhere, if it was truly ever there. And that's, that's the big threshold question. We got that far to a closing and we can't get an answer from a major bank like Wells Fargo. If it was, you know, the bank of Joe down the street somewhere, I would get it. But Wells Fargo, I mean, they, either they committed to the project or they didn't and it certainly appeared that they did from the closing documents. But you know, it just, it makes no sense at all.
Understand.
Any real estate transaction I've ever heard of and our closing attorney has done them for 30 years that we hired and we spent some more money to hire a separate attorney, right?
Like I said, the purpose of my appearance tonight was to let you know that funds are in process, so.
Okay.
We will, we will present bank statements next week with the funds in the account and you guys can go from there, all right?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll wait on that, thank you.
All right.
All right. Anyone else in the audience for anything, online or anywhere else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of, yes, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Bring up one thing and I don't know if this is possible or not because I know Donna's trying to get people to attend the meeting on October 12th. Is that something we can maybe do a spotlight on on the town website or something like that?
Sure.
At least to try and drive some attention to it.
Absolutely.
We can get a notification out, Facebook, all of that, on the website, absolutely.
Okay. Oh, it's eight o'clock already, we didn't even get to our agenda yet. That's okay, that's all right. So the mayor's update, yeah, we'll. Yeah, yeah, you can't take a month off, that's always a mistake. We'll move on to our agenda. I have some other things we could talk about in our council communication, so. So we'll go to our consent agenda. I know you folks have seen it. We have, what do we have, eight, yeah, seven, seven items here. We've all read them through, so I'm not going to go through them in the interest of moving forward. If there's no questions on the items, mostly they're accepting donations to different organizations in town, to our library, to Borough Animal Control, Fire Department, Golf Course, Police Department. So all donations, which is wonderful. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
And I could question about number seven, please.
Yes, you can.
The donation from Prince of Peace.
Yes.
One of the parishioners asked me a question before the meeting started. Why is this for the council if they want to write a check to the fire department nonprofit? Just curious about the logistics on how that donation works.
Wait a minute, that's not on the consent.
Number seven?
It is seven.
From Prince of Peace.
That is there.
Oh, that should have been with you, I'm sorry.
It should have been removed, okay, okay, sorry about that, yeah.
So just do, just vote on one through six.
One through six, one through six it is. All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda, items one through six that are presented.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Harry Nunnell is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, so move. New business.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is the application of the, sorry, I'm still catching up to this stuff here. Is the, recently we had the town meeting. I'm going to have Kevin Dillon give you a brief overview and then depending on how you want to proceed, managers are available to answer any questions. So I'll give you a brief discussion slash presentation.
And before we go with that, so you know, I do want to thank everybody that spoke up. This is why we love people, maybe you think we don't, but we love people coming to our council meetings. We love people tuning in and listening and seeing what we're doing, how we're doing it and what you want. Because we're, you're elected officials and we want to do what the people of Berlin want and within reason. I mean, you know, within reason to be fiscally responsible and throw those disclaimers there. But so we're happy to have this input. It's great to have the input. So I appreciate people tuning in and being interested in their town, which is what we all hope for. So anyway, go ahead, so sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you.
For people to know that.
Kevin, I'll turn it over to you to give you a brief overview and then we can take it from there.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So when we started the budget process, we kind of broke everything down into four main strategic priorities, public safety, education, infrastructure, and culture and recreation. As you look at the capital items that were brought forward and discussed with the council, as Kate mentioned earlier, it was almost $2.7 million proposed in the budget and it covered each of these areas. They were tiered into four buckets and the Board of Finance, after carefully reviewing and holding a similar meeting in council chambers, which was well-attended by a number of folks from the public, providing feedback in a variety of areas. They brought forward $1,070,000, which was the first of the four tiers. What staff had worked through cross-functionally to prioritize to the highest level. When that meeting was done, a couple of Board of Finance members said, you know, we heard feedback from the public and we'd like to see if there's an opportunity when fiscal year '23 is coming to a close, if the funding is available to maybe expand that out and cover some of the other areas. One in particular were the playgrounds. Several folks spoke about that and the desire to see improvements. So what you see is a slightly expanded list from what was originally included within the budget, but it does still cover all four of those areas. As you kind of break down and you look at the agenda item, it's broken into major areas and there's people either on Zoom or in the room to be able to speak specifically to each of the items. As you think about public safety, there's modems, police modems for critical communication with the police and dispatch center as well as police vehicles. As we get down into further vehicles, Mr. Simons has done a great job of assessing three highway vehicles. These are the larger vehicles that are critical year-round for work that the beds are rotting out and he has an opportunity to replace the beds without replacing the vehicles. The economic value is pretty clear. It's basically the cost of one new vehicle to replace the three beds. So there's an opportunity to keep three vehicles on the road for the price of one for several years. And then an additional pickup truck that is quite old being replaced for the highway department. The Board of Education has a number of old, high-mileage vans. During the budget season, there was a strategy document shared out of a multi-year replacement strategy. We are still in the process of trying to catch up with the vans. So this is an effort to continue that process and, you know, the council should be aware that this will continue at least for the next three years to try to catch back up to vans that are 15 to 20 years old, 100,000 miles plus that kids are getting on every day. And also along the lines with the school, something else that will continue going forward are the school cameras. Over the last several years, there's been a push nationwide for enhanced school security, whether it's access control cameras, et cetera. It's important to not only put those in place, but not let them just sit there. And so this is continuing to address both replacing old as well as making sure that the system is integrated and can be maintained. You don't want disparate systems throughout the different schools. Having consistency benefits technology, it benefits public safety. Within the facilities, there is a moisture issue. This was referred to the Public Building Commission during your last meeting and it's. tempting to address an issue that exists in the old section of Berlin High School. The ballast blocks are related to the cement, so the town has, in 2016, invested in solar panels on four of the five schools. These are blocks that keep these solar panels on the roof, so they're safety as well as infrastructure-related. And finally, for the facilities you see under there is Town Clerk and Assessor. The Town Clerk has an extensive area in a fire suppression-protected safety vault, vital records that we're required to maintain. That space is becoming more and more limited. There's an opportunity to expand that vault out into what is currently a portion of the assessor's office, and this proposal is for architectural work, as well as initial funding towards the new area, the fire suppression, as well as reorganizing the assessor's office to try to accommodate that critical need. The grounds department has identified, several years ago, the town invested a few hundred thousand dollars in renovating the basketball and tennis courts at Berlin High School. In order to maintain the warranty on that and maintain that structure, there has to be resurfacing done about every seven years. So this is to maintain in order to keep our warranty. The tracked snow machine is a critical piece for clearing sidewalks and other areas. Mr. Wood is there to be able to speak to the specifics on that. He's spoken extensively about little people, so I won't go into that much more. And then, the bridge replacements at Timberland, at this stage, we need to complete the engineering, be able to go out to bid and assess the final cost. The expectation with this is that we'll be able to complete that and then come back to you to use state grant money, a LoSiP money that we have in place that's already available through OPM, to ideally be able to fund that project, replacing all seven bridges so that they are safe for public safety, for carts, and also for folks walking. That's kind of the high level of each of the projects and the broader picture of where they are. These were reviewed with the Board of Finance at their final meeting in, in July. They gave a head nod, there was no formal vote and approval, that waits until what comes forward from you. But I will also, in ending, just reiterate what the mayor said earlier, which is, this is about the funding. Any project $25,000 and above requires coming back to the council for approval, so this is putting in place the appropriation, but that is a critical element when it comes to going out to bid and being able to come forward looking to award the bid, is to have the funding in place, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
All right, thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. So now, we can go through some of these, if we have members of the council here have questions on some of these, please speak up. We do have a much more specific list here with quotes and different things. So we'll just start with, as it appears on our agenda item here, the $50,000 for computer equipment for police modems. Is that, that's for the P, the department itself, or for the?
For the department.
It's for the department, yeah, okay, yeah. That's for the police station, so. Speaking of the police renovation, just while we're, we're on the police renovation, so, I didn't get a chance to talk to, I meant to talk to Don Lombardo from Public Building, but I, I don't know where we're at with that. I, I know we were, we were, if you know, because I, I wanted to, or maybe Kevin Delaney knows, or who knows?
Mike can give an update from PBC, if he's online.
Oh, great. Oh, beautiful.
Mike, do you want to say anything?
I'm sorry, just while we're on the PD, because I, I think there's some money we want to.
Where we have with the PD renovation, Public Building Commission?
The PD renovation, where we stand with that?
Right now, oh, like, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Jacuzzi Humes has pretty much finished all the design drawings and is working with Jeff to offer to prepare the bid package. The Brian Hughes will be coming to the next PBC meeting to lay out the schedule. So, in, in my mind, and I guess with the, with the PBC as well, how is this going to get funded? I think that's the major question, because the drawings will be done, the bid package will be done, it can go out to bid, but I don't think the funding avenue has been identified yet.
Correct, that's what I wanted to bring up tonight, so, I know we had, and I'll let, Donna could speak to it better than I, but what I think in, in the meantime, before we perhaps get some funding, I know we didn't go to bond it yet, but I, my, my suggestion will be, and I did mention it to a couple of members of the Board of Finance, that we would appropriate a million dollars to start out of the fund balance to, to get the project going, and then we'll see, Donna, I'll, Donna, I'll let you say that, I know you've applied again for some additional funding, and, and then we could also go to probably bond perhaps the rest of it, but I think we want to start it certainly with a million dollars that we would take out of the fund balance and pay for it before we bond anymore. But Donna, what do you, what do you have on the state funding?
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, I guess I'm getting a tick back here. Mayor, I have, it's not a dead issue. Initially, I, I was told that the end of September, there was going to be another meeting. It looks like that is being pushed out. I may not have any firm answers until the end of December. I will continue to push, even if we can't get the full amount, a portion of it, specific dollars, you know, I put in the, for the full amount, at the time that we were, we had a, a price tag of, I think, 3.9. So we, we obviously are pretty much shovel-ready, and I am going to continue to fight to get some funding, some sort of funding.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your hard work on it, Donna, and I know you didn't, we didn't get through that first round, but I know you've got, like you just mentioned, so that's great. We'll certainly accept whatever.
I'll try to keep you up to date, obviously, and dispose for the next few weeks.
No, I know.
It's not like anything's happening right now. You know, we're not in session, although I, I am, you know, on the list, it's not a firm no. I'm hoping and praying that they will continue to fight for what we're looking for, and the best I can offer is that I will get back to you and keep you abreast of what's happening as we move forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, thank you for that. So would the council be okay with, and I don't know, Mike, and we could talk to Public Building, but Roche, you know, whatever you all think, we don't have to make the decision now, but I, I propose a million dollars, let's get that going. So, you know, we can then either go bond the rest, if we have to start, you know, down that road, I know it takes a little while, that's why I want to get a million dollars out there to get this thing going, once the plans are ready.
Mayor, are you proposing to?
We can't do it tonight, but.
Oh, good, we're going to have to go to a special town meeting.
Yeah, 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 no, I know. No, 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 I know, we can't do it tonight. No, I know that, no, I know that, I know that. No, 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 that's, I get that. But my proposal, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying, get ready. I, I think we should do it the next meeting, assuming we're at that point where we need the funding, and it sounds like we're there, right, Mike, or, or close to it? And Jeff, too, Jeff's here. Whatever you think, Jeff, what do you think?
If I may comment?
Oh, yes.
So, once the bid package is ready?
Yes.
It'll probably give 30 days for us to put it out in the market, then, fine. But, if you're planning to bond a certain portion, I'll have Kevin comment on this, there's a timeframe for that as well.
Right. Understood.
We probably want to have a conversation about that.
Yes.
Because that means we have to bring an agenda back to the council for bond ordinance as well.
Right.
Anything you want to add, Kevin, for the timetable with the bid package and the bond ordinance?
I mean, just, just to reinforce what you had said, there is a timing, there's an internal timing in order to, you would have to direct the town manager to start the process with bond council. That would then have to come back to the council for a public hearing, it would have to go through the council and Board of Finance. That's to get the ordinance approved. If we decide to go to the market, as we typically do, that then requires a period to do some marketing so that folks can be aware of, of, of what the town's trying to do. If we were to do short-term notes, that's a little easier, but if you're looking to bond, that's also going to require engaging with standard and pores and having a bond rating redone. So from the time we have an ordinance, you're probably quick, if you want it to be quick, 45 days out before we'd actually close on a bond, and that'd be pretty fast. So if, if you're interested in bonding, my suggestion would be to try to move the ordinance as quickly as possible. As I've said, each time we do an ordinance, my recommendation would be to approve an ordinance higher than you expect, so the ability to borrow is there. Approving the ordinance doesn't require borrowing that amount, but it gives you the flexibility to, to, to borrow as the need arises. And I think you want to be in that position as close to the time the bid's opening, given everything, I mean, Mike can speak to this, but I, I think you probably have, maybe, if I'm being generous, 60 or 90 days where those bids are held, but I'll defer to Mike if he has a different timeframe.
Yeah, it's usually 60 days is the max we have for bidders to hold their prices.
And that's for the entire project or the whole? I'll let Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, Brian Hughes reached out to me last week and asked me to draft the contract documents for the bid package, which I did, and provided those to Brian last week, and when I asked him about the anticipated timetable for bidding, he said ideally they wanted to be on the street by the 7th, which is the day after tomorrow. He was in, he was anticipating a bid opening date in the second week of October. So if you open bids the second week of October and bidders have to hold their prices for 60 days, that takes you into early December to make an award.
Now, that's for the total cost, Jeff, or, I mean, if we, is there money upfront? We could just appropriate, or no? We have to, I, I know, we definitely got to go through the bond process, get the ordinance, there's no doubt about that, we have to start that immediately, but is there money that we would need immediately that, as we go through the process?
Just to pay the architect.
Well, I mean, that, we could, yeah, and how much is that?
I don't know.
We, we have that funded already.
Okay.
Yeah, they're already under contract with us for the whole thing, including construction administration during construction and to close out. So it's really the contract, the contractor's cost.
So, the next amount of money would be, the next funding would be what? So we pay the architect?
Well, if you, like I said.
We don't need the whole, the project money upfront.
No, no, the, the contractor gets paid on a percentage of completion basis, monthly, based on progress payments.
Right.
So if you, if you award in, you know, early December at the latest, then you're not going to have your first requisition until January.
And why would it be till December? Because by the time we get the bonding in place, is that what you're saying?
Well, if, if you open bids the second week of October and you do a scope review and you expedite it, you could award as early as the middle of October. But you don't really want to award until you have the funds in place.
Okay. What's the total cost we're looking to pay for this project? Refresh my memory, if you remember?
It's in the three to four million dollar range.
3.9, I believe.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, but if we take some money out of surplus, because I think that's kind of the plan, maybe a million dollars, we knock off that, they would want to pay out of our fund balance, not surplus, but fund balance. Can't that, that's a meet, that's, we could vote that in very quickly, right? As we go through the bonding process? We wouldn't borrow that million dollars, obviously, would just you pay that out of pocket and bond the rest, the other 2.9 million?
It's a special appropriation.
Do we need that all, I know we have to do that, but we need, we need all that upfront before we could award it? I mean, they're not getting paid till January, anyway. We can't just have a million dollars sitting there appropriated for that project to start to get them going on it?
Sure, you can do it that way.
Oh, so that's what we'll do.
Yeah, because if, if you, if the rest of the appropriation never occurred, you would just terminate the contract for convenience.
Okay. So, I would say, if you folks on the council agree, we'll put that on the next agenda, a meeting to vote in a million dollars out of our fund balance to start the police renovation project, and immediately go forward with the bonding as well, Kevin and Jeff with the ordinance and get that going, so we could, you know, get that through and obviously borrow whatever we are going to borrow on that. But let's get it started with the million dollars. And I think the Board of Finance is okay with that, too, informally, obviously it's going to, you know, go through them, but I think we, you know, had some informal discussions with the two or three of the members and, you know, we could get that going and, and then the rest we could bond. And then, obviously, we don't have to borrow it all, right, at once, and we'll see if Donna comes through, yes?
So if I understand correctly, at the September 19th meeting?
Yes.
You're going to set a special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then at that first meeting in October, which I think is the second, you'll have the town meeting?
Yes.
And then you can appropriate the fund?
Yes, correct. Yes. Does that make sense? And then, we're also going to go forward with the bond?
Ordinance, yep.
With the bond, right? Okay.
So also, at the next meeting?
Yes.
We set the public hearing on the bonding?
Yes.
And authorize the, you know, the bond?
Correct.
Okay, council to, okay.
Yeah, yeah, speed it up as much as we can, but at least we'll have the.
I don't know when they can do the short, I mean, Kevin has to talk about going to market and everything on the.
Oh, yeah, no, I.
We got to start it somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, start it, we know it's going, we know, we know there's a timeframe, you know, and we all accept that and understand that, but at least we'll have, for back, I'll award the seed money, the million dollars immediately available to start paying folks by the time we get the bonds in place and borrow whatever we do.
Let's get everything that we need to do as a town council in place, so they can start moving along.
Yes. You guys agree, Peter and Donna? You guys good with that?
Yep.
I agree, and I think that, you know, I will make some phone calls and inquire again, because things change daily, you know how that goes? And, you know, do some door knocking, if you will. Thank you.
All right, good, so we're all good, we're all good with that, right? All right, all right, so I know that's off-topic, but sorry, but we're talking about the police department, so I figured I better get that in there, get that rolling. All right, so we're on the mod, I'm sorry, police mod, it's that kind of night, we're all over the place, that's okay. The technology for the modems, $50,000, we have the estimates here, and we looked through them, what do we?
Drew Gallup's online, if you want to.
Oh, Drew. Hey, Drew.
Drew, do you want to comment on the modem?
Anything on the modem, Drew?
Are you on mute?
Okay, there we go.
Hey, Drew.
The, the modems that we're referring to are actually in our police vehicles. They're quite old, and all the information that flows through the vehicles that comes from dispatch and the different systems that we need to run, license checks, registration checks, all that stuff flows into the vehicle through that modem. These modems are very old and overdue for replacement, and that's what's, the cost is for that. I don't know if Brian Freeman has anything to add. I talked to him earlier today, that cost doesn't quite cover the modems, but there's not a huge amount that we left over that we would have to cover with our existing budgets.
Okay, appreciate that, Drew. Questions for Drew while he's on the line? Any questions? Concerns? No? Yes?
I'm just wondering, is this the right time to scrutinize each one of these appropriations? Because they're all going to have to come back to us, because they're over the amount. At the time of purchase by the department, we can scrutinize the value of each item.
We need to go through, I don't want to just send them through and then.
You don't want to just send them through as a budget number?
Some that we are good with, which probably is several of them, and others, we're probably going to need more information. Why send them all through and go through that again?
We're going to need information on any one of them, as they.
Well, but briefly, like this, on some of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather vote, vote some through and get them off the list, send them forward.
Yeah, it's going to come back to you anyway.
It's coming back anyway, but, but I mean, I just.
That's what I'm saying, is.
But I don't want to just send them all forward and just start all over again. I mean, if we could weed some out, and, so this comes back forward, the modems, if we say yes tonight, comes back, yeah, okay, done. We don't have to go through reviewing it again, I'm just trying to expedite the ones that are, you know, no questions. Does that make sense? Am I off-base? Am I all, all right, okay, good, all right, just want to make sure. Okay, so, thank you, Drew, so we good with this one? So, yeah, so what?
Good.
What do you want to do?
So we'll make a note, you vote at the end, right? Or do you want to do it?
Would I do vote on each one individually, Mayor?
We can.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. So we'll take a motion.
The motion being, will you appropriate 50,000 for computer equipment, police modems?
Make a motion to appropriate $50,000 for computer equipment for the police modems.
From general fund, undersigned fund balance for fiscal year 2024.
Thanks Charlie, second on that?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved? Phew, number one, phew, it's only 8:25, not bad, all right, so...
I think it would be helpful if I asked Jim Simons to come and give a quick recap on the town vehicles.
Sure, excellent.
These are all important, but I think he can just hit the highlights.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Mr. Simons, Mr. Jim.
And one of these items, actually, we have it on the agenda for you to actually take some action on it, because it's time sensitive because of the winter.
Yes, yes sir. How we doing?
Yeah, we're making it.
Yeah? You guys were, had quite the presence out there yesterday on the Berlin Turnpike with the accident, was it yesterday?
I've been offline.
You've been off? Yeah, they had some two-car accident, but...
They are quite busy.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that.
Month of August.
Yeah.
Just over 80 crawls for the month of August.
Really? Jesus.
Jim?
They are quite busy.
I get in text that, can't hear the mic.
Oh, you want me talking to Mike?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, Kate.
Not like you've never done it before, Jim, I mean...
Oh, yes, they've been...
He does have difficulty.
Forty years, forty years has it been now?
I needed to laugh.
God bless you.
We didn't have, we didn't have all this stuff before though.
That's for sure, I get it, I get it.
We met in a back room down there, Doc MacIntosh fed us all and...
Yeah, yeah, we progressed to transparency now unfortunately in our government, or fortunately, I like to think, but that's all right, I get it. Yes, sir.
We want to talk about vehicles, we want to talk about the three dump trucks?
Yes, please, yes.
So basically, we have three large Peterbilt dump trucks that have a steel body on them back, it's a four-season body, which means it has snow and ice fighting equipment built into the body. Those bodies accumulate or cannot be cleaned properly, so they accumulate salt in them. So once they accumulate salt and the corrosion starts and then they rot out. We've gone through those bodies and replaced floors and trays and all kinds of different things on it. My plan is, is to remove those bodies and the hydraulic systems that go along with that body, which is the conveyor system, the dump cylinders, the side cylinders, and install a stainless steel body on them and never have to worry about that salt again with that body. So the trucks itself, we'll talk about the trucks, the trucks are mid to late 2000 series trucks. They are essentially before DEF, which is diesel exhaust fluid, which makes them a, hate to say this, but makes them a very viable truck, because we don't have as many sensors on them, so we don't have downtime with those units like that. The chassis are in prime condition, they are Peterbilt, so the cabs are all aluminum, they're a heavy construction truck and what I call it, not a pickup truck, which if you buy a, some brands, their trucks are constructed more like a pickup truck instead of a heavy construction truck. So they make it a very viable truck to rebuild and move forward. So by putting the bodies on these trucks, I am anticipating that the trucks will survive right through to 2035. And at that time, we'll have to look at what we're going to do with that, which we'll have to come up with a plan sooner than that, because we're going to be mandated to move to a different type of power plant.
Oh, yes, 2035, yes.
So by rebuilding these trucks, we get them out there and they should be fine to keep going. And in the long time, we'll take three trucks off of the replacement.
That's great.
So then we have a pickup truck on there. Pickup truck goes to the highway department. I want to say, and I don't have, I have to apologize, I didn't expect to come up and talk that much, has somewhere around 130,000 to 140,000.
Yeah, we got your little summary here, yeah.
Okay, you have the summary there.
Yeah, we see it, yeah.
I will be replacing the floors and the rockers in it just to get it through the winter this year. But it's, it's time to replace.
It's done, yeah, it's done, yeah.
In the past, in the past year, we've replaced five bodies, or five floors, rocker panels, cab mounts, everything, just trying to fight the salt. We fight the salt every day. So this one here, we're going to be fighting the salt, but this one here also has other issues, because of the mileage on it and because of the work it does. So it's time to replace this truck. Now, with that being said, if I was to drop an order tomorrow, you still wouldn't see this truck for another, at least a year.
Sure, that's amazing.
There's no, no let up on that backlog.
Really, huh?
Now with the, now with people going on strike, and Ford's saying that they're going to go on strike from building trucks, and they're actually beginning to shut down or pull back on their, on their plants, their truck building plants. So I'll say a year.
That's awful.
Police cars?
A quick comment on police, I know Drew's there, but...
Drew's there too.
We have to replace the police cars.
We're hoping Donna comes through and provides us money for a supervisor's vehicle, I think that's already been put in, although I don't know where exactly that is. And this is going to replace some patrol cars, actually it's going to replace three patrol cars. We're currently anticipating that those patrol cars, and I say currently anticipating because pricing on the next batch of patrol cars won't come out to the fourth quarter of this year. So we took last year's prices and we gave it a little bump up, and we're anticipating that the patrol cars from Ford will be somewhere around $40,000 each. And then we have the conversion over, taking the old equipment out, going through the old equipment, replacing that old equipment, and we're anticipating that we're going to spend somewhere close to $200,000 for those, for these three patrol cars. And this is not including the supervisor's car that hopefully the state's going to use.
Okay. Okay. All right. Questions for Mr. Jim? No? We're good. So what do we think about the vehicles, folks? Jim, I know you are saving us a ton of money with the truck bodies, so we appreciate you doing that. And, I mean, it's the right thing to do, but I mean, you, you know, definitely went above and beyond to, you know, get, get our vehicles replaced and keep them safe and keep the town working and, you know, not bankrupt.
These will be the last large dump trucks, after this, we'll have all stainless steel bodies. And my plan moving forward was that the stainless steel bodies will, at least the last two chassis, so two chassis, a cabinet chassis, we will have that body to move forward. Yeah, you're not going to save a ton of money, but you are going to save some money, because that stainless steel body will...
Yeah, that's great. Well, you know, whatever we save is taxpayer money saved and we could spend on different things in town, so that's great. Yes?
There was one other item on his list about a senior transport bus?
Yes.
Not on the agenda, but it was in the...
I do see it in the write-up.
Yeah.
It was not because the...
What happened with that?
Because the...
Legal notice.
Legal notice went out prior to that.
Okay.
That's why it could not be on here.
All right.
So it's something that we'll have to be discussing.
Okay.
And the problem with that is, I'll just, a couple things, we anticipated getting a state grant on it.
Oh.
Something happened with the state grant, we didn't get the state grant.
Gotcha.
We have a senior bus that has 160,000 miles on it, and we bought that bus, actually used from the Red Cross, and it's tired, it's shot. You know, so when, when you anticipate that bus coming up, or that bus being replaced this year, it's now not being replaced for at least another whole year and maybe two years. I was told that if I was to order a bus now, you wouldn't see it for at least a year. By the time the chassis got built and then they put the bus bodies on it, that's the part that's killing us.
Yeah.
More than anything. I mean, we have, we have some old cars out there that we need to do something with. Rocha's talked to me a number of times about it. We need to, we need to do something with those cars. And the reason why those cars are falling behind now is because we were reusing the police cars and put them back into the fleet and keep maneuvering well, now we're retaining some of these vehicles in the police fleet and other places, and they're not getting out to where they really need to be. So we need to really look at the fleet for cars. And when we were buying smaller cars and putting them out there, because they're running around in-town cars, those were fine, but even smaller cars now, almost $35,000.
Yeah.
There's no more, there's no more $22,000, $18,000 car out there.
No. Nope? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
So these vehicles that he mentioned, the police vehicles, the body, truck replacements, and the pickup truck, that we, what do we think? We good to send them forward?
Yeah.
They say yes.
Yes, 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 Donna? Peter?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Okay, well, there's some more off the list, all right, yes. Motion, yes, we need a motion.
Move to...
Silly me.
Appropriate $200,000 for police vehicles, $275,000 for large dump truck body replacements, and $65,000 for pickup truck from the general fund, undersigned fund balance for fiscal year 2024.
Take a second, a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Every now and then, is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved? All right, Board of Education, if we go follow the list there, the vans, the school vans? So I thought, last time I, when I come up, Jeff?
Mr. K...
I just have a question.
There's an explanation for that.
Okay. Because, yeah, yeah, I, I thought somewhere, we initially, you had asked, I think, for three vans, then I believe you bought two out of your, out of funds you had, and I think then we told Mr. Benigni we would buy him two more. That's what I understand, that came up at the Board of Finance, there was a discussion about it, is that sound right?
I can tell you what I, Jeff Cugno, Director of Operations for the Board of Ed, I can tell you what I understand of the conversation.
Sure, yeah.
I was not directly in any of those conversations.
Okay, okay, okay. Nor was I, but that's what I understand, yeah. But I did hear, I think that came from Brian too, but anyway.
It was, it was, they were good conversations.
Yeah, oh yeah, it was all good, it was all good stuff, yes, 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 yeah.
We've talked a lot about our van situation with the Board of Ed, and, you know, what we have to do to keep the fleet going, and I think, you know, Kevin is very helpful on this, we did a big report last time, and as you heard Kevin earlier today, you know, he understands where we are and where the costs go and how much it costs us if we don't buy new vans, because we still have to use the same amount of vans, and then we have to lease the vans on a daily basis from NBT if we don't have the vans, so it's a little bit of...
And, and from that, just someone that spoke tonight talked about the school vans and...
Joan.
Joan did, Joan did, yeah, but so, and I know we had that explanation already that we used to lease them from them, and it cost a fortune, right? From what I understood, so...
That's what I've been told.
Yes, yeah, same here, and hence we went to purchasing the vans.
And we have a pretty effective way of doing that with the vans. Now, we, to answer the question of somebody that spoke up earlier, the town owns the vans.
Right.
NBT does not provide us the vans, we buy the vans, because it's more effective for us to own them.
Yep.
And number one, and number two, excuse me, is we can, we can maintain them ourselves, which makes some sense.
Sure.
Not the town maintaining, but NBT will, we pay, we pay NBT to maintain them, we can hold them a little longer, this is a double-edged sword, we can hold them a little bit longer than NBT would be able to with their licenses and so on and so forth. So it's a balance that's, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
The subject that we're at right now is what are we buying and what we anticipate buying. We set up with Kevin a while back, you know, if we can purchase three or four vans a year, we will, over a certain period of time, be able to get to a place where our vans are all, we'd like to say under 175,000 miles on them and continue to use them, we have ones that are more than that. We all believe that that shouldn't be that high for student vans that are used daily, bringing, bringing our students back and forth to school. So we're trying to get newer vans, we have to buy a little bit each year, it'd be nice to be able to come in here and ask for as much money as possible to buy a whole new fleet, but we know that that's not going to happen. But it is very, very important piece by piece. So what happened at, just the same thing as last year, we put in 100, I think it was originally $110,000, it was up to $140,000 to get some more vans. Actually, Kevin and I, if I remember correctly, thought that we would be able to get maybe four vans with the $140,000. That number was put in place a year ago in November. We cannot buy four vans with that many.
Seems low for four vans.
Yeah.
In today's world, yes.
You can't do it, you can't even find the vans to buy.
Right.
It's a whole other situation.
Right, right.
But, but that plays into what we're doing here now. We wanted to have them in the capital plan like, like everybody did, it didn't happen, and so we got closer and closer to the end of the year. What I had to do out of the business office is to work with, in this case, Jangris Ford, but some other places, also to go, can we set aside vans for us when money's available? They have to order things so early nowadays to get a manufacturer, that you've got to set aside vans months and months before they ever show up, and that's even farther out than normal. So what happened is we got at the end of the year, back to your discussion that you're talking about, we got to the end of the fiscal year, we hadn't bought the vans yet, okay, because we didn't have the money to do it, we didn't have anything appropriated for that, because we were hoping we could do capital, and what I was told is they wouldn't hold the vans any longer, because the demand for vans was so much that I had had some of these people holding vans for four or five months. And this is just an order, this isn't the actual van, the van's not made yet, okay? That's how far we are getting these vans, you know, we have to add. So what we decided to do with all, because of all these conversations?
Yes.
Send these vans aside, and we put purchase orders in for two.
Okay.
We took that out of money that we had, grant money, it was not appropriated for that particular use.
Yep.
It was a flexible enough grant where we could put a purchase order in, get it set aside, but that was always anticipated that we would be reimbursed by the town if in fact they did it in the capital. So that's, that's how I understand the conversation.
Why Jangris Ford, why not the Ford dealer in town, just out of curiosity?
Didn't have any available.
They didn't have any, okay, just curious.
Yeah, that's the, that's, we usually use, we usually use the local, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't have any available.
Okay.
And what these guys do, and it's not a criticism at all, they work across all the manufacturers that do vans, and there's not that many, to order enough to get set asides and get, get, set aside four at Jangris.
Yeah.
They go out and do very mystical things to get vans, and it's, and it's tough to get purchase orders in at a time to have this set. We did, we did, we talked about these two vans, we're, now we asked for three, we couldn't even find how to be able to legitimately get us three on cable, so we said two. That was probably in January, past January.
When are they?
And they...
Came in?
They weren't built yet.
They weren't built yet.
Holding, holding them off for us to go ahead and get them paid for with the purchase orders.
Yeah.
Where we can actually show that we have some money.
Right.
We did the purchase order all the way to the end. It was June 30th. But, we had to, or we wouldn't have got, if that went away, it wouldn't have mattered if you gave us the money right now or not, we would, we're not going to be...
Vans are gone.
So, we're hoping for reimbursement. That was the idea.
For the two, for the two?
Yes. That was the understanding that, at least I was told in conversations.
Okay. Well, we, so you just want two, those two?
Well, that's all we put the purchase order in.
Yeah, okay.
What we want is...
Yes.
We want four. We can't afford that, because we don't have it, but we're trying to get another one, but I can't get...
You can't even...
...a manufacturer at the time.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we reimburse you for the two you have? And if you find another one, once you come back or...
Constantly, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, if you find it.
Start again.
Come back.
That would be a great commitment.
Yes.
Because we're going to...
Yeah, we'll do that.
At some point...
If you guys all agree.
At some point, we're going to get another van.
Yes.
We're going to start our, our budget for next year. You're going to see more van purchases.
Yeah, no, we...
We're not even close to being up to where we need to have a... This is not the kind of thing I want to talk about too much publicly, but we need safe vans.
Yes, absolutely.
You can only maintain them for so long, for so well, and then you're really stretching. You're going to see these kinds of requests constantly.
So, the 140,000, is that for two? What would that figure be? What are the two that you...
The purchase orders we put in so far, and I think that our Finance Director Ashley put in was, I think it's 125.
Alright, so...
Two purchase orders together.
Okay.
We couldn't do three, because we...
Can't find them. So, does everybody, everyone on the council, Donna, Peter, and all of us here, we're going to agree for 125,000 to reimburse them for the two they have on order that they filled out the purchase orders for? And if they can find a third one, they'll come back to us later, and, you know, we can fund that out of, out of...
Okay, by me.
Is that good?
Sounds good to me.
Everybody good?
Yes.
You guys good? Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
Because I know sometimes we get things brought in front of us that say, you know, we're going through this state purchasing agreement or this state...
Yes, yeah.
Is there anything like that for vehicles like this?
These are all on state.
The state contracts.
I wasn't sure, so I just wanted to check. Okay.
You good, Charlie? We're good.
I should have said that.
Thanks.
Okay.
There's no bidding wars or anything.
Okay.
And I will tell you that Kevin knows this, but what you will also be able to see is when the budget comes up this coming year, we will reevaluate where the vans are. We do a report now that goes, that's what we have, here's where... Oh, sorry. You'll get a report that says where you, where you are before we go into the next budget year. So, you can anticipate, you know, the, the story's going to be the same.
Okay.
The cost of the vans are going to go up, I think, unfortunately.
Of course. So is everything else. Yes, understood. So, is that, that's good? We'll reimburse these two?
That seems to...
And then we'll just see what happens.
As long as we can come back in this, in this till of money that you're talking about, because I know it's hard for you to just grab money out of the air.
Yes.
We know we have funds.
Yes.
We'll do our best to find a van.
Okay, alright. So, motion, uh, naturally.
I just have one quick question.
Quick question, one quick question.
On both of these items, is this part of the Board of Ed budget, or is this separate? Whenever he talks about the Board of Ed money spent per year.
Separate, right?
Do these items go into the Board of Ed budget?
No.
The Board of Ed is...
This is all capital.
All capital. It just has nothing to do with the school budget.
We don't do vans in operation. It's not in our operating budget.
It's capital, but it's for the Board of Ed.
What money were you buying the vans, vans with, with the purchase order? Grant money?
Purchase order is grant.
Grant money?
It was just my, my home loss commission. It was included in this call.
Yep. To reserve them.
Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out which column we're looking at. Thank you. I move to appropriate 140,000, or 125,000 for school vans, and 195,000 for school cameras.
That's separate, right?
That's separate?
That's separate, that's separate.
Separate, okay.
Yes.
So, I move to appropriate 125,000 for school vans from the general fund unassigned fund balance in fiscal year 2024.
Alright, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Have we none of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved? Now to the, the school cameras, and just...
Would you like a recap on that?
Just real quick, yes.
Ashley, you going to do this, or?
Yeah, I can do this one.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, we submitted 195,000 in security camera and tech, and security equipment upgrades, rather, to the campaign plan. And a bulk of that expense is to replace about 79 cameras alone at VHS. And I know many people get concerned. They, they turn to the argument, VHS is a brand new building. It's, it's really not. The renovation is over 10 years old already. And many of the cameras that were looked, replaced, the 79 that we're looking to replace are actually non-compatible with the, the security systems that we have in place right now. So, once they've reached end of life, which many of them are, they're dead zones essentially in hallways, the exterior, and, and other areas within the high school itself. So, typically, what we do is we purchase on state contract through Security 101. We have a great relationship with them. Our security system is Genetek, and we have two of our IT technicians who are Genetek certified. So, by doing this, we reduce our maintenance expenses. We typically purchase four models of cameras, depending on the location of the building, interior, exterior. And then we also have some cameras that we need over at the middle school for high volume areas like cafeterias, gymnasiums, and then essentially in the hallways over by the eighth grade wing. They're just areas where kids like to congregate. It's an issue for security. We have no cameras there already, so we need to add them to the system. And then the other security camera, or security equipment that we're looking to replace, or increase, rather, is the radios for our security department. It's two-way radios that tie in directly to our PD. They're used on a daily basis by, secure not only our security team, but also our building administration, our teachers. It's just an added layer of security that we need in our buildings for effective communication in the event of any kind of incident that may occur.
Thank you. And, the, so, are these cameras now, so the new ones, are, are they, all the cameras in the school system on the same, like, software? Or how, are we integrated with all that, or no, no?
Yes, so all the cameras are running on the Genetek software.
Okay.
However, the ones that we absolutely need to replace at the high school cannot tie into that particular system. The ones they die, they're done. Whereas when we have a more updated camera, we could fix it and then tie it back into the system.
So, these new ones, the new ones you'll tie into, integrate into the whole system with the same...
Yes, yes, and that way...
Yeah, okay.
Yep, and then all cameras throughout all the buildings will be the same.
Right, okay, good. Yeah, good. No, that's good. That's important, to, to get to that point, you know? That they're all integrated. Okay, what, what do we think? School security, you have blind spots, you have dying cameras, not a good thing in today's world, as we know. So, alright, so, Peter, Donna, good?
Fine, by me.
Good, Donna?
No, I'm good too. So, I, I know you mentioned Berlin High had so many. What about the other schools?
I think it was...
McGee's in here.
McGee's in there.
So, the priority right now with, with these funds are the secondary schools, because that is essentially where our biggest security threats are as far as lack of footage or, or security footage throughout the building. Those are where most of our discrepancies are. Every year, we do try to add a couple extra into each of the buildings whenever we can, if we have a little bit of funds left over in any of our equipment lines, then we'll buy one or two cameras. But, an upgrade to this ma, caliber is going to require capital funding.
So, we're comfortable with the other schools in terms of what we have currently in place?
Yes, as of right now. So, what happens is every year, the Director of IT does a secu, meets up with the Director of Security and does like a security audit essentially, and we review all of our cameras, locations. We meet with building administration, request areas, like, do you have any problem areas that are constantly coming up with student discipline? And, based on that information, we know whether we need to add or subtract. Because sometimes we do move one, and I don't want to say subtract, never take a camera out once it's in, but we may move it from one location to another if we find it's a better fit. But, as of right now, the elementary schools, what we have in the elementary schools is, is sufficient to what we need.
Thank you for that answer.
Does the PD have access to these cameras at the dispatch, or no?
So, the software does allow the PD to tie in if they, if they want to go in and review some cameras. It's just, I'm not quite sure if they're trained on that particular software, but it does give them the ability to log in and review footage as needed.
And do you save the footage for a period of time?
Ooh, I want to say it's 30 days, but don't, hope me I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. No, you do save it for a while at least, yeah. Drew, you're on. Can the PD go into, get into that system and look at footage if they need, if need be?
We can. One of our problems is that there's a lot of cameras, and we don't have the capability to view them all at this time. We would need more monitors. We really are limited to space in dispatch. And there are also still times when we only have one dispatcher during the day. And that's too much for them to watch that. The other monitors deal with police and fire transmissions. There's only so much one person. Frankly, there's only so much even two people can do when we have two dispatchers. So, that's going to be a conversation we have to have for the future now that the camera systems are evolving, and they're getting a lot more cameras as to having the staffing for the police department to actually be able to monitor those.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would think it was something you want to look at, maybe as we go through the renovation too, you know? If there's anything we could do to fix some of that, yes.
If there was some sort of situation or emergency there, you would be able to access it. It's just right now, you're saying, you know, based on looking at it on a daily basis because of personnel, you can't, but in an emergency, you could.
We could bring those cameras up. We just, we don't have the capability to keep them up all the time and monitor them.
Okay, thank you.
So, in the, in the situation of a, yeah, whatever occurs there, you could pull them up, okay? And, do you know if it's saved for 30 days? Do you know if they save it?
It's, it's not our system. We just have access to it.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, just curious. Alright, so, right, we're, so we're all good with the cameras. Obviously, they need to be upgraded. We know that. It's 10 years at the high school, so... Alright, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I move to appropriate 195,000 for school cameras district wide from the general fund unassigned balance in fiscal year 2024.
Alright, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Have we none of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, so moved? So, thank you. So, facilities, the, so that, that first one, right?
So, there's an agenda.
Yes, I see.
Item number three, if you recall, you recommended that Public Building Commission take a look at this. And they have an agenda item for you to hire a consultant for $15,000 from professional services. So, my advice would be to table 200,000 until you get their report back.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Yeah, we, we had a good discussion with myself and a member of the Board of Finance, Tim, with Mr. Benigni. We looked at the problem, and we talked to, you know, the Public Building Commission and, you know, and I was talking to Jeff on the way in too. You know, we're not, I don't think anybody's sure what, what the, where the problem is. We worry it's worse than we think, or, you know, it could be better than we think. We don't know really anything. So, yes, that, that's why we wanted their expertise. I'm glad they are going to put that contract out, and then we could determine what, what in fact is going on, and, and then we'll go from there. We have, you know, we have no idea what the cost will be, or even what the problem is yet, so, yeah. So, so leave that for that topic? We don't need, we'll just take this off for now?
Yep.
Okay.
And Doug's online referee can talk about the ballast?
The blocks, yes. The ballast block. So, what, I, so, yes, go ahead and give us a recap.
A quick recap on the...
Yeah, sorry, I know you've done it before.
They're supporting the solar panels.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yeah, just, Kevin, Kevin mentioned these are blocks that support the panels on all the rooftops. Some of them deteriorated. We replaced the portion that have failed.
Okay, and they're less than seven years old? Is that what it was last time? We talked about it, or not?
Yeah, 2016 and 17.
So, did we check with the, what did the company tell us?
Unfortunately, there is no warranty based on the product spec.
No warranty at all?
It's within a year.
A year warranty on concrete blocks, huh? Sounds, sounds like a good deal, but...
Who was the manufacturer?
Ramo Concrete.
Oh, you heard of them?
Oh, yeah.
And?
I will talk to them.
Okay. We may have a contact for them. Could we just hold off on this for a moment and...
Can't hurt to ask.
Yeah, we may, maybe we could...
How many blocks are involved, do we know?
I'd have to go back to the list to double check the quantity that was replaced. It varies school to school, based on where they are in the building, how much snow and ice sits on them all year, rain.
Were the 50,000 covered a removal and reinstallation and all of that, or just, just to buy new blocks?
Correct. That was materials and labor.
We can probably, Doug, we can look into the number of blocks and just shoot an email to Council of Engraves.
Sure.
If you could give me a description of the block too. And what size, what weight, whatever.
Sure, it's within the packet that was submitted.
So, we'll hold off on that?
Yep.
Okay, and...
You want to...
Well, yeah, time, time is ticking. It's getting late. We have more to do, I know we do. But, for the benefit of a couple folks here, the Timberland Bridge, what do we...
Do we still want to leave the other one? There's another item on the facilities, the...
Yeah.
Looks safe.
I just wanted to see if a couple folks can, maybe...
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Okay, I don't want to hold everybody up for our whole agenda.
You want to do the grounds and...
Yeah, well, let's hit the Timberland. Let's just go to the bottom for a minute. The Timberland Bridge, what, I mean, it sounds like it's a safety issue and, yeah.
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 If Saul or Jerry, one of you can give a quick recap.
Yeah, Jerry, you're here, or whatever, whatever you want. It sounds like it's a, it's a serious issue. Saul, right? You can say whatever you think.
It's a serious issue, but at the same time, that Jerry's walking to the podium.
Yes, yes.
Just a reminder that the Gulf operations closed really well this year, 190,000 to the good.
Oh.
Yeah, so that money fell into the fund balance.
Oh.
So, we can make the argument that the golfers are paying for it.
Excellent.
Last few years, you know, under the leadership of Jerry and Saul.
I'd like to hear that.
Really good job.
Yeah, that's great.
Mark and the Gulf Commission, so kudos to them.
That's good, that's wonderful.
So, the, the monies went to the fund balance, so if, if somehow we can help, it's a real issue. You can't ignore it. At some point, you've got to fix it.
Yes, it's a bridge. We don't want anybody to get hurt.
So, but Jerry has got some ideas on different courts and different styles.
Okay.
And there's a very cost-effective way. I think he wants to do this.
Okay, whatever, yeah, whatever you think, Jerry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The bridges at Timberland are 35-plus years old. Last time they were replaced were the mid-'90s, when the great flood came through and they were reconstructed. Consequently, they've fallen into disrepair. I'm not quite sure they're up to code. I did reach out to P&amp;Z, and I'm thinking they're not, and we'll leave it at that. So, I've been working with Earth Contractor, who's a, who's a recognized contractor with the town of Berlin. And we've come up, we've investigated four viable options, really one viable option, as far as I'm concerned, most cost-effective. So, we looked at replacing what's there, and then bringing them up to code. And we looked at that, we looked at the current construction. We're like, yeah, well, that'll work, but it's really a Band-Aid. It's not a true fix. Then we looked into aluminum bridges that would be purchased from a company out of Florida. I'm sorry, Georgia. And the cost of the bridge, getting it here, was quite expensive. And then if we wanted it powder coated, it was even, the powder coating matched the cost of the bridge, so it was crazy money.
Wow.
And I, I spoke with Mike Ahern. He turned me on to a company out of Florida, York Bridge. I contacted them, I spoke with them. Nice people, do beautiful work, but this is in Augusta, Georgia. So, enough said. So...
Oh, boy.
And he reached out, maybe you know Atlas Concrete in New Britain. And we've got a quote from them for a concrete deck bridge. And, looking at the numbers, it is the most cost-effective way. They have a crane, they set them, they manufacture them. Whatever railings are going to be required as per zoning would be, could be fabricated by them. They do cast iron railings. We can do them out of wood. That would all be done during the, the design of the bridge. But, you got to start at the beginning, and the beginning is retaining an engineer. Because all this doesn't mean anything until the engineer tells us what we need as far as specifications. So, what I'm looking for is the monies to at least get the engineering on board. Whether you do the project or not is really not, is kind of a moot point in that the engineering will always be there. So, whether you do it today, tomorrow, next year, that engineering will still be, or should be, useful to you. So, we're looking for that, and I estimate that to be between 5,000 and 7,000 for the engineering.
Yeah.
Again, I did speak to Mike Ahern. I love him to death, but he says that sounds about right, Jerry. That sounds about right.
So, you want to just do that to start?
I would like to start there.
Alright, yeah, that makes sense, sure, yeah.
If, if it all works out, and they are, it's kind of like one-stop shopping with Atlas, in that they have the engineers on staff.
Okay.
We can go from there. And if we get to that point, it looks good, and the numbers look good, we can always come back and say, hey.
Good.
We can move forward, or we should move forward with this.
That's great. Alright, yeah, go ahead.
Is Atl, would Atlas be the prime contractor now?
No, because Earth Contractors would have to do all the prep work, abutments, all that. Earth would do that. Atlas would come in and actually set the...
And you're not going to go out to bid, only Earth Contractors?
Oh, that's got to go out to bid.
Go out to bid.
That's going to have to go out to bid.
So, I just completed a project a couple months ago with Atlas. We built the bridge in Guilford.
Yes, he said, I talked to him.
And it worked out really well.
Yeah.
They did a nice job, and they have the equipment and their own crew, they can set the head walls and everything on their own.
Right, right, yeah, it's really one-stop shopping, and actually, I spoke with Bob today, I believe.
Rizzo?
Tomorrow, and he'd mentioned that project they did in Guilford, I didn't know you were part of that project.
I brought them in, and we did, there's some fancy onsite concrete work have to be done.
It's beautiful work.
I did the shelf that they needed and stuff, it worked out.
I look at it this way, we're one and done.
They did a great job.
Not messing around, wood, you know, aluminum we can't afford, it's-
Maybe Charlie could-
And if you paid it-
His expertise and do some work, he could donate it to the town too, just kidding.
I'd be glad to act an advisor for no charge, if I can help, and I've worked with Atlas quite a bit.
What are you looking for, Jerry?
So what do you want?
What I'm gonna look for, I'll tell you what, I'm looking for ten grand.
I was gonna say, you probably should do that, yeah, okay, a little bit more.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, that, okay, yeah, that-
Get it started.
That makes sense.
Mr. Payne, that's all, I appreciate any help.
Yeah, let me know.
You good, Saul, with that? We're all good?
I have a quick question.
Oh, yeah, Donna.
Congratulations, as a matter of fact, it's great that you guys made money. In any event, these bridges that you're looking to repair, are they on the course itself, or are they in, in the trails where people walk? Or combination?
I'm sorry, they're on the course itself, so you not only have the golfing public, I'll be very honest, I've noticed over the past couple of winters, there are a lot of people, maybe because we've had mild open winters, that are walking the course. So, this is becoming quite the place for people to walk, hike.
It's beautiful there, and I do a lot of walking myself, well, not lately, with a knee replacement, but on the trail areas, and there's a lot of, you know, bridges there. But the course itself is, is beautiful there, and we certainly need to make sure we update and do what we need to make it safe, because I agree, there's a lot of people that utilize that park. Thank you.
Alright, so, yeah, okay, so, I think that's, ten thousand dollars would be the, the figure that would, would get you going with the design and engineer, and figure out what, what we gotta do? Yeah, okay, and then we could, you know, come back, and when you figure out what, you know-
We can look at everything.
At everything, and, and do it as a project, yeah. And again, you know, it's your money that's in the fund balance, so we're happy to-
Kudos to Kevin, because, you know, he was, you know, talking to me about using LoSAP money, and if we can do that-
Well, if you could do that, even better.
Even better, so if we can-
Yeah.
You know it's gonna be, Mr. Payne, that's, you're gonna know it's more cost-effective to do them all at once, as opposed to bringing in a contract and do it piecemeal. Once they're there, they wanna-
Yeah, they wanna do it.
If I can help you all, let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so whatever you figure out-
You figure it all out.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, we'll just make a motion for ten thousand?
I make a motion to appropriate ten thousand dollars for bridge replacement engineering at Timberland Golf Course in the general fund unassigned fund balance in fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Here we none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all. So, could I just do, just one more, I, I wanna, I, we gotta stop, I know we got so much more to do. And so, I just wanna, the playground, just 'cause Donna's still here, and Samantha's still here. So, the playground, Samantha, just for yourself and Donna, could we, 'cause I know we wanna, we kinda changed gears a little bit with the splash pad and the playground up on Worthington Ridge, could we just, just give us a couple weeks to look at this one here, and Worthington Ridge, and I don't know, Woody or Donna or whoever, get some type of rough estimate on the splash pad? Just, I'm not gonna hold you to that, just ballpark it, just so we kinda, I, I wanna, I like to consider it all together, rather than just hit one for two hundred grand, and then we're still looking at that one up there. So, can we come up with some type of plan? Yeah, Steve, whatever, whatever, I'm looking for your expertise, just to, before we do anything-
They have numbers, right?
Yeah, just, how you doing, Steve?
Great, how are you guys?
Good, so what do you think? Can we just?
Yeah, so if you look at the packet that came in-
Yeah.
At the end of where all the playground is, that they designed for little peoples, if you go to the end of it, you'll see a breakdown number and figure for what a playground would go to redo, community playground.
Okay.
It's kind of a tire-kicking price of like a starting point.
Okay.
I will reach out to a couple of people, I know Fairfield just put in a splash pad down there.
Okay.
Ours is a little different, because we've never had one before, we don't know where the-
Right, it's new, it's new.
We don't know where the water would come from, but I can try to look around the best I can.
Okay.
Or what that possibly might cost.
Yeah.
I heard somebody throw this out there tonight, is, you know, two hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot for a playground.
Yes, it does.
Are we looking for a playground that's going to be full and active and bring people for years? Or are we looking for half-empty playgrounds?
Well, here's the question, though, that, that, that's the question probably Park and Rec needs to talk about, and, you know, 'cause it's your guys' purview really, and tell us, but, you know, if we're gonna make that one on Worthington Ridge kind of the showplace, I, I don't know, I'd rather spend more money up there. Splash pad, nice new playground, bigger park, everybody can enjoy, and I'm not saying not to fix this one. But, yeah, there's more parking, you know, and, and then, and then, I mean, do something to people's playground here. I don't know what yet, that's why I need you and the experts to think about it, but I'd rather make that a nice, really nice place to me, that, you know, rather than have to, you know, I don't know how many people use this, I may have to bring my son there when he was little too, but, you know, then, then we switched to the nice one in Willard, but I think when you have a splash pad and you have a nice playground together, I'm sure that's gonna be the place, but I just, if we could, you know, have a discussion at least before we make any decisions?
That's-
This just popped up in all of our heads, what, last week?
Yeah, we've been planning this-
You've been planning it, but we haven't-
Better over two years.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out how to align everything, get where the place is gonna work.
So whatever, what do you think, Donna, does that make, just to-
Unless we're gonna make Worthington Ridge a little people's park, along with a big people's park?
Yeah.
Usually little people's parks, Steve, you know better, a lot of other towns have done it.
Yeah.
But little people's park is the only park we have in town that handles preschool ages. What you wanna do is have, you know, just ages, honestly, you know, five months old, maybe six months old in the baby swing, or whatever. You wanna have that park available, because the little people-
Yeah.
From school, usually have different needs. As, as they get maybe to be three, four years old, they'll be using the splash pad. But I'm not sure that even the space at Worthington Ridge-
We don't know yet, right?
You know, we need the playground there-
Right.
With the splash pad.
Right.
But not necessarily for the little people.
A lot-
This is the only one we have, so that's why we're waiting here.
Some towns have age, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, we won't lose it.
Yeah, depending on how you, how, what the splash pad ends up looking like, some towns actually have age restrictions on their splash pads. You know, because they, they really do tend to be for, for toddlers, you know, and up to maybe, you know, my kids are seven, they still like them, but they're like the largest kids at the splash pad, you know, when we go up to the ones in, in West Hartford. So, you know, those are kinda things to think about, you know. Mostly, they do attract younger moms with younger kids, and, you know, they tend to orientate toward that, whereas the, as the kids get, exactly, as the kids get older, they, they'll, they like the pool more than, than the splash pad. So, that's something to take into consideration when redoing the playground over there, is to put some equipment in for smaller children as well, because you're really going to have, and you get a lot of, if you-
By the splash pad.
Mom, Moms of Berlin, Facebook page, they're always talking about little people's playground. You know, what's, why, when are they gonna redo little people's playground? You know, and mo- and mostly that page is young mothers, you know, with, with, you know, preschool and younger aged children. So they constantly, I, I see little people's mentioned like multiple times, you know, on a regular basis. So they do care a lot about that, and they'll be very disappointed if we are redoing a playground, and there's nothing for the little people. Especially when they're all going to be the ones going to the splash pad with their little people.
Right, so I don't think little people's playground is named little people's playground for little people.
Yeah.
The way playgrounds work is you have two-
However.
You have two different types of playgrounds, you have two to five, which is like your toddlers, and then you have five to twelve. Two to five-year-old child should not be on a five to twelve playscape. And when we design them, and when the contractors design them, it's a balance of everything. And then they throw in some ADA requirements, so the playground would be friendly to all ages from two to twelve. And by working with this company, whoever would build the splash pad, we would give them, they, they know better than we do. They're the experts, they build them every single day, and they're the ones that we would go to for these answers. But this playground would be completely inclusive, it wouldn't just be for little people or big people, it would be for everybody.
Got it.
Could we go down the slide too?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Make sure it's for everybody.
The ribbon cutting.
Yeah, the ribbon cutting, go down the slide.
So I'll come back next week.
Yeah, just give us, just give us two weeks, maybe, and you guys, Park and Rec, whatever, yeah, whatever you guys think, and we'll, we'll figure out like a, maybe a little bit more, I'm just thinking like, let's just like get a comprehensive plan done. You know, for that Worthington Ridge, whatever we decide to put there, and different equipment if we decide, and then fix the one here too, but just-
Two questions, do you have a budget you're shooting for, or would you just like me to grab, not grab a number out of the sky, but focus on like two hundred thousand for the playground, and three hundred thousand for the playscape, and keep it around, I mean, for the splash pad, and keep it around like a million? So when I reach out to the company, say if it's landscape structures, and say, I'm-
Oh, a million now, we're up to a million from, oh, two, yeah, whoa, whoa.
Two hundred, three hundred, a million.
Two or three hundred to a million, I like, that jump just went right up. I wish my stock would go up that fast, but it doesn't go up that way.
What I'm saying is when he gives us something comparable in a drawing of something they've done realistically around us, at least we have something.
Oh, they, a splash, a splash pad? Where, where'd they put that in, Donna, where's that one?
Veterans Park, I think it is, in Milltown.
Where's Veterans Park?
Yeah.
Is it, where, where's that at, in Milltown, do we know? Like down?
So, you know, I haven't visited, I've seen pictures of it.
Okay, we'll check them out.
Yeah, but we don't know what the price is, so we can find out that one.
Yeah.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Have Sloper just put a brand-new splash pad in over there? And they have a whole range of kids that utilize that facility in terms of ages. I don't know if you had a chance to go over and check it out, but it's pretty interesting, okay?
Check that out, Donna.
Yeah, they just finished it, just finished it.
That's great. Oh, good, alright, well, let, yeah.
I do have a question, so where you're anticipating putting the splash pad, it's gonna be a splash pad and a playground, correct? Is that going to replace another playground?
So yes, currently the playground that is at Community Playground, just like most of the playgrounds, all of them were replaced in the late nineties. So that playground too is twenty-two, twenty-three years old, same as Little People's is. So we would hopefully, if possible, replace the upper part of Community Playground with a new playground, and then the bottom of it is where we'd like to utilize the splash pad.
Okay, so that's why you were saying three hundred and two hundred, plus the two hundred for little people, is what you were, okay.
Exactly.
Just so I had it in my head where we were going, okay.
There, right, and I know the question's gonna be brought up is, yes, we've had a lot of complaints, because the courses will be on Brandy Island where they will come up and they will park. And there's also the same time that there is softball games going on at Centerrally Field.
Right.
A lot of them all fall in different times, you know, like Centerrally Field is extremely busy in April and May, in the first part of June till school gets out, and then from June all the way till August, September, it's very empty, and there's not a lot of traffic.
Okay, I, that was, I was wondering about that, that, yeah.
And I think that's an easy traffic survey of what that would be like if we went that route. And then it also gives you the ability, you would also be able to park on top on Worthington Ridge, and walk to either, and be, take part in either one of the playground or the splash pad.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I just, you know, before we just go forward, and I, I like, a plan is always good, I think. You know, just now that we're adding some things, and tie this one into it, and figure out what the best way to do it is.
And at that time, when I come back next week, will I go over the other two capital items on?
Yes, can we do that? I'm sorry, I know you waited all night, huh, it's horrible, you're pissed at me, but we really wanna go home at some point too, but we're not getting out of here for a while. You could stay for the whole thing, we'll talk about it in the end, no, just kidding, just kidding. Yeah, if we could do that, 'cause we, we gotta finish this agenda.
Okay.
And, but I think it's all, I think it was good discussion, and, and we'll, we'll get, we'll work on it, and we'll get it done.
Yeah, we do appreciate you bringing up the splash pad, trying to break down this year.
It seems like all the towns are doing it, and it's popular, right?
I don't know, I'm getting contact through who Sloper used, and maybe that could help.
Oh, we should look at that too, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think we're good for now.
Perfect, see you guys in a couple weeks.
Alright, see ya.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Can you come up? He can come up, just one quick second. So, the Prince of Peace thing that was on the agenda? So-
It's only for information.
Yes, that was only information, but-
Okay, so, yes, so, I'm the treasurer of the former Prince of Peace Lutheran Church. We have closed the church effective November of last year. State agencies purchased the church, et cetera. I have a responsibility to the synod, where we had leftover funds, international, national, local. We decided to make a donation to the Berlin Fire Department. The check is still, we'll just say, held up, the church has been presented. I need to report back to the synod when that check could potentially be cashed, that's all I'm looking for.
That's probably a offline, right, okay, yeah.
It is on your agenda.
Yeah.
Alright, and I pulled it off consent, I didn't take it off consent, but I put it on the regular agenda, because I wasn't there for that meeting, but there was a conversation about it, that the fire administration wanted you to at least be aware of it, and it was an FYI, if I understand correctly.
So-
Mike. It's agenda five, it's there.
It's on five on the list in here?
Because in the town charter, it talks about the acceptance or of donations, especially donations that are used for the same purpose as town funds. The town council has the ability to accept, I, but they need to be aware of donation. So a donation of that sizable amount was put onto the town charter, or the town council agenda, so that you were aware of it, if you wanted to do anything. If we were turning the check into the town, then you would be accepting it. But being that you pay for some of the maintenance on the building, and which it's going to be used for, you have to be at least made aware of what's going on, that's why it's here.
So-
So in, in reality, if it went through consent, it would have been an issue, and everybody would have been done with it.
This money will go directly to the fire department, not part of our general fund.
Correct.
So they're just making a donation to the nonprofit entity.
As the agenda item states.
Why, why did you take it off the consent?
You're not accepting it.
Oh, we're not accepting it, right.
We don't need to make a move?
Right, we don't have to, we don't have to make anything, yeah, okay.
It was only for informational purposes, because as fire administrator, which is had on over there-
Yes.
Simon said, is it normally these donations would not have even come to you?
Right.
Had to do with the size of it and the generosity?
Yes.
Size of its generosity, and that it's being used for the same type of-
Yeah, that we-
Expenditures that you would normally fund for.
Right, okay.
Has to do with you according to the town charter.
So, if I may-
Yes, please.
I assume too is that the two hundred thousand for the town clerk and assessors will also come back to you?
Yes.
Okay, so now, we're done with number one?
Yes.
So can we move up number five?
Yes.
This gentleman can go home?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes, let's make a-
Alright, let's do that.
Make a motion to move number five up next.
I'm, make a motion to move agenda number five to be our next item.
Yes, so, so, you, yeah.
I just wanna, if you want, a little history, basically the church, over the course of multiple years-
Yeah.
Has really appreciated the fire service.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
It was a situation back, we'll just say well over twenty years ago, where there was a baby left on our church front door.
Oh.
The volunteer fire companies really helped out the church. So therefore, when we decided to close, we wanted to make sure that the four Berlin volunteer fire departments did receive the appreciation.
Oh, that's nice.
And we've also taken care of some other non-town-based Worthington Meeting House, as well as a couple other EFW, American Legion, et cetera. So it's not like it's anything super special, wasn't supposed to rock anyone's boat or anything else.
No, and it doesn't, it's good.
I just wanna provide some insight, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, so-
I wanted to say it is super special that your parish is so generous, it's a wonderful thing.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
The whole town appreciates it, thank you.
Wonderful, but we're good- But we're good. So, just, so the bell, we have to, so the bell is a whole different issue.
The bell, yeah, the bell's a separate issue. I need you to talk to Seacark about that.
Okay, figure out the bell later. All right.
So this check can be deposited, I did communicate with Seacark.
Yes.
That's what I was here for.
That's it. Thank you. Sorry you had to wait all night to hear that.
I know.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Appreciate that, though. Thank you. All right, so what do we, we moved up? Did we vote? We're moving up?
There's no vote.
We don't need to vote. Let's just, let's do five. I know Jim likes staying here a long time, so we'll-
Let's keep going on these-
Thank you, and, and discussion, we're going to get it done. Don't worry. Yeah, all right, thanks.
All right, so done with agenda item number one. Agenda item number two
Yep.
is to appoint Webster Bank as trustee and custodian of the police-
I thought we moved up five.
I thought we'd done with five.
We just did five.
No, no, we didn't do five. Five's different. The buy, the purchase. Just so Jim-
Sorry, you want to do that first?
Yeah, we'll do five. Let's do five, then we'll go back to two.
No, number five is a practice.
It is?
Yeah.
This summary is not-
There's no motion for five.
You need to look at the individual agenda items.
What?
Because this summary is-
So what happened, all right?
My number five says-
I'm going to have a head on-
If you look at-
My number five says the dump trucks.
Okay, and I apologize for this.
Oh, oh, Jesus, okay.
All right, so unfortunately, I took time off.
Kate, you can't do that. That's terrible.
So, it will be that the Prince of Peace is done and over with, and it was on the consent. I moved it to regular agenda so that it would have a conversation. You have no action needed on it.
Okay.
That takes care of that.
Okay.
All right, so now we'll go back to item number two.
Two. Oh, okay, so, all right, gotcha.
So we'll come to six very quickly.
We'll be right there.
Number two, we talked about, had to do with the police pension fund.
How did that go, by the way?
All of them turned in their paper except for two, everybody else, two offices, everybody else has joined the pension.
Two did not, two, everyone else did. Just curious.
Very quickly, Kevin, 30-second recap on how we selected Webster, and we need a trustee to now move the money.
Is Webster good? Are we sure we're okay with Webster? Okay.
Kevin.
At, at your last meeting, you agreed to hire fiducian advisors, and part of hiring them was to have them go out to bid. So you see the results of the custody review and hiring them as trustee to manage the assets and make sure that we handle everything appropriately.
Yes.
They were able to get four responses, all four very good, very reputable firms. While Webster's asset-based fee was higher than the other four, or the other three, sorry, those other three had minimum charges that were substantially higher than Webster's minimum. So we are recommending going with Webster. That is also supported by our advisor, who works with a number of municipalities and their pension plans, as well as a relationship with our actuaries, who has a very good relationship with Webster. Webster is also our operational bank, so we have a strong relationship as a community. And then, of course, they have a local presence here, as well as throughout, throughout the state. So we're recommending that you be, appoint, that you appoint them as custodian and trustee so we can move forward, opening the accounts, transferring assets.
Okay, nope. All right, so any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I have a, I have a quick question.
Yes, yes, Donna.
So who monitors, I guess, the progress? Is it an annual thing that they review, how they're investing the funds?
Well, Webster would be the custodian and trustee, so they will hold the assets. Fiducient would recommend to the town how those assets should be invested. There will be a group that, that the town manager is currently reviewing what, what should participate, who should participate, what should that look like? They will, fiducient will provide quarterly updates and reviews so that we can continue to monitor, just as we do with the defined contribution plan, and make any modifications to the investment strategy as, as the marketplace changes. As we've witnessed over the last year or two, it's, it's a very different marketplace today than it was two years ago.
Where are these, the fiducient advisors, where are they out of? Are they local? Are they, are there other agencies such as us using them?
There are a number of municipalities using them, everywhere from Greenwich to Glastonbury has them. They are existing defined contribution advisor and have been for a number of years. Their parent is actually based out of Chicago, but this is a firm that used to be FIA and then merged with fiducient. They've had a presence in Connecticut and locally for many, many years. I'm not sure exactly when, but it goes back into the 90s. We work, our personal contacts are partners and longstanding members of the firm.
Are we good?
Yes, yeah, I just, sorry, thank you.
No, 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 it's all good. Okay, where are we at?
Ready for motion?
Motion? Yes.
Move to appoint Webster Bank NA as custodian and trustee of the Town of Berlin Police Benefit Fund and authorize the town manager to sign all documents necessary to execute such agreement, pending review by legal counsel.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Agenda item number three is what we discussed before, recommendation from the Public Building Commission to hire a consultant to find out the mystery behind the Berlin High School slab moisture issue. Do you want any more explanation?
No, no.
We can move on with this.
We have more than enough tonight of explanations. No, that, and, and we had, and we had a lot, we had a lot about this one, though, so we know. Yeah, that's good. Right, we all good?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so motion.
Move to authorize the Public Building Commission to contract with outside service providers to conduct investigations and related work on Berlin High School slab groundwater issues for an amount not to exceed $15,000, as this is an advance interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All, all does in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agenda item number four is a four-year lease contract for two printers with the Office Works Inc. This is another one of those calling annoying requirement that the charter requires regardless of the amount, any multi-year lease come to the town council. And even though it's $1,654 a year. Do you want to say anything, Kim? It's a printer lease.
Well, gee, while you're here, what the heck, the night's ruined anyway. You might as well say something. Sorry.
So just a little background on this. So the library has two public printers near each of the Internet carols, and they haven't worked well for a number of years. They're probably five or six years old. And at this point, we've had a lot of staff time that we've spent fixing them ourselves to little or no avail, and then, of course, patrons are getting frustrated. So entering into a lease with Office Works would be very helpful to, A, have working printers, and also it'll save us some money on toner. So we've spent $912 on toner for just one machine over the last year.
Oh, okay.
Having the support and also having working printers would be wonderful.
Yes, working printers would be really nice, wouldn't it? They should be working at our public library. That's right. All right.
Good question.
With, with the number of, like where it says 1,500 black, 500 color prints, is that about an average where you end up, or how much?
So incidentally, right now, I don't know, because we don't have a way of tracking the number of prints that we do there. But we're going to start with that threshold and see after a few months if we meet that threshold, and if not, it can be adjusted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What is it currently to print?
It is-
Do the patrons pay?
Sure. They get 10 free prints a day right now. And after that, it's 15 cents a page for black and white and 25 cents for color.
So 10 free pages a day.
So that's a change that Kim and Kevin made very recently last year.
We did it last year. And it was partly because the patrons want to be able to pay by card, and, you know, the cost of accepting money that way just didn't make sense. We might as well try out offering 10 free prints a day, and so far, that's been successful.
That's good. No, I think that's great. Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
The resident have a library card. You should be able to get a card.
Yeah, I mean, a few prints.
We've got our cards.
Yeah, we got our cards. You know what? I got some stuff to print. Let me go down there. Ten, up to only 10, okay.
All right.
No, that's great. Okay. Yeah, so we're good?
Any questions about that? So I'm just asking for a special meeting, I think, for-
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, mayor, is that to mean you're going to be laid out?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's my question as far as-
Yes.
Schedule at 7:15.
Yes, if you could, yes.
We have a commitment, and we can have the council meeting at 7:30 this way, or soon after that.
Yeah.
Can you do that, Kate?
I can schedule everything for 7:15.
Yes.
Yes.
And this won't take two minutes, three minutes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but I, it was another town event I wanted to get to at 6:30, and, and it's, it's a good, it's the awards given to Volunteer of the Year, right? So for the, the award is from the Dornfried family, and it's to the Carol-
Boxers.
Huh? Carol, my goodness, I can't, I can't, Cody. Carol Cody and her husband for doing the, starting the boxes to boot, so that we're all familiar with. So I just want to be, they asked me to be there as you go, and then we'll be here. That's why I'm making a little bit later last, next time. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Way off topic. Way off topic, so.
I'll be here in a minute. On the 19th, it'll be at 7:15, 7:20.
The start of it, which will be the hearing starts.
It'll be the town, the town meeting.
And then, to 7:30, yeah, okay. Yeah, right. Sorry about that. All right, anyway.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're good. We'll take a motion, and we're good. Thank you, Kim, for staying in so late.
Move to schedule a special town meeting at 7:15 on Tuesday, September 19, 2023, to approve a four-year lease agreement between Berlin Pec Memorial Library and the Office Works Incorporated for two Ansera 6230 CDN color printers to be used for public printing. The total cost for both printers per month is $1,300, $137.90, 68.95 each, for $1,654.80 per year. That includes 1,500 black and white prints and 500 color prints each. The overage rate is 0.0138 cents for black and white prints and 0.062 for color prints.
Okay, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
All right, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
We already discussed agenda item number five.
Yes.
The donation.
Yes.
So no need to talk about it.
No. Just take a motion on five.
Moving on to number six.
Six, we already, right, that was just a discussion, right? Or?
Yes.
Yeah.
So your number five on the agenda and your quick, our lead package.
Right.
Gotcha.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, this is the, we just talked about it, the highway dump trucks.
Yes.
stainless steel dump bodies.
We absolutely would love to get approval on this. Jim has been with his influence, trying to keep them on hold. We're trying to get it going as quickly as possible. I mean, Jim will be happy to talk more about the dump trucks, but this motion is asking to fund the $225,000. You just discussed at the-
Yes.
Town meeting.
Motion.
Move to approve the purchase and installation of three new dump bodies on trucks number 271, 327, and 328 from Freightliner of Hartford for the cost not to exceed $275,000, utilizing Connecticut DAS contract number 15PSX0017, pending approval of the FY 2023 surplus transfer by the town council and the board of finance.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number seven is establishment of a Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, and this pretty much recommends what board of commission representation should be on this implementation committee. Maureen and Jim's available if you have any questions. Jim, Maureen, do you want to say something very quickly about the implementation committee?
Well, I can blow through it pretty quickly. We probably have, a good morning, a good evening, everybody.
You like morning.
It is morning, I think. All right, go ahead.
We, as you know, the POCD was adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in June after the town council endorsement endorsed it in May. Affordable Housing Plan was adopted last year. They are related to each other and both have, both of these documents include implementation plans. And that implementation plan has is it prioritizes and establishes the boards and commissions that are responsible towards achieving those goals. The board has been laid out and in priority by the Planning and Zoning Commission in their adoption. And now what we're looking to do is to ask the town council to form a 10-member implementation committee made up of members of those boards and commissions that are listed in your document. Are the ones that have been established as the lead or the assistant leads on most of the actions in the action plan of the implementation. And our suggests, our recommended methodology is for the town council to allow each of those boards to choose their liaison or the person to sit on the committee that is best suited from that board, subject to approval by the town council at your second October meeting, we hope. So if you endorse this or approve this, what we'll do is write a memo to each of the boards and commissions that are listed, asking them to take action at their next meeting. It should happen in that month and a half or so. For anyone who hasn't been on, on town council or who isn't familiar, in 2003, an implementation committee was formed, and it seemed to have been a very effective tool to get the goals laid out in the POCD accomplished.
All right, thank you, Maureen. Yes, absolutely.
I worked with Maureen and the Plan of Conservation and Development Commission. I started when I was on planning and zoning and, and did continue the participation even while I was on town council. And I think there's a lot of good, good things in the Plan of Conservation and Development, and I think without having that implementation committee, there's, you know, Maureen's only one person in her department, and, you know, that department is small enough as it is. And I think having this committee to ensure that that plan is followed and what should be done gets done, I think, is very important to the town. There was a lot of time and effort put into the plan, and I think it just makes logical sense that we would set something like this up.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments or questions? Makes sense? Okay, yes.
I, after listening to Sandy, I think she should be our representative for the committee.
Oh, there we go. I like it.
You want, Peter, I will accept.
There you go. Perfect. Well, looks like we're there. We got it all done. That was quick, quick and painless, except for Sandy, but that's all right, yeah. Yeah, all right, that sounds good, Peter. Sounds good to me. What do we think? Good? We all good? Yeah, Sandy's a one. Excellent. All right, so we'll go ahead and-
Sorry, Maureen.
We'll take a motion on this?
Move to create a Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee Move to create a Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee that would also monitor implementation of Affordable Housing Plan with one representative from each the Planning and Zoning Commission, Economic Development Commission, Conservation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Water Control Commission, Inland Letlands and Watercourses Commission, Board of Finance, Zoning Board of Appeals, Historic District, Commission, and Town Council. That the representatives be nominated by each of these bodies to the Town Council before October twenty-fourth meeting, that the council could consider the appointment Implementation Committee representatives after receiving such nominations.
Yes, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
All right, thank you. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Maureen.
So the next one, agenda number eight, is the authorization for the town manager to deed the abandoned section of the Wigwam Road. I think you have seen this.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple times, but it comes back to you in different form, so...
Yes, it always comes back, never goes away.
Wigwam, uh, right-of-way emergency use vehicle public access.
Okay.
On, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, um, the reason we're bringing it back is it wasn't really properly deeded in the first place. So in order for New Britain to, you know, uh, agree to a relocation, we've got to go back a half a step and deed it to them. And Jeff and I have been dealing with the City of New Britain Corporation Council, so we're kind of going through this exercise again.
Okay, yes, we've seen this before, if I remember. So, okay, we're, yep, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Move to make a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to eight twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes regarding the deeding of abandoned portion of Wigwam Road to the City of New Britain Water Department. It is, as it is owned, the properties on both sides of the road, which portion extends from the north end of Sanctuary Lane to Ragged Mountain Preserve. And again, to review the relocation and right-of-way as depicted in the map titled Relocation Easement for Public Access and Emergency Municipal Vehicle Access along former Wigwam Road dated June two thousand twenty-three, a scale of one inch equals three hundred feet prepared by New England Geosystems.
Got it?
That's it.
We're good? All right, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good night.
Good night. Or good morning, so, yeah.
Agenda number nine is to award a bid. We will complete some work in the McGee Outdoor Classroom Project.
Yes. So...
Maybe Mr. Kugno can give a quick recap. It's nothing new, we have approved all the stuff, this is a bid to actually do the installation.
Yeah, we already, right, we already approved this, right?
Well, no.
No, no?
Not the bid.
Not the bid, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kugno, Director of Operations.
Hey, Jeff.
Uh, hi, hi again. Uh, no, you've seen this project before.
Yeah.
You've approved two things with this project. One is the purchase of the pavilion. The second is the bid that we had for the guardrail. This is the last leg.
Okay.
The rest of the work is being, was put out the bid for G C to assemble and erect the pavilion because it gets delivered here, and then do site work and pad work and so on and so forth. Um, been working with Doug Soluk on this, working with the purchasing department. We put it out the bid, uh, we received only one bid. Uh, it's from a local contractor. Um, we, one of the reasons is there's some specialty stuff in this because you've got to know how to assemble one of these pavilions. Uh, this, we're very lucky because this contractor is, is one that's on the, uh, the town's list for contractors, Earth Contractors LLC, Andy Rubiak. Uh, and, um, they do a lot of work in town, but also they've erected things that do with these pavilions. For example, you all know the one that's over at St. Paul's that's there.
Oh, yeah.
That development, they're very well experienced in this, so we're very happy. But like I said, it's some specialty work, and I believe that's the reason why we maybe only got one word, one, uh, bid on it. There's other things included in it, there's a concrete pad, and there's electricity, and there's vans, and there's concrete, uh, I guess, a concrete pad. So, um, the schedule that's proposed is we can get this done this fall. Um, matter of fact, the pavilion that we've already purchased is going to be delivered to the site until September. Um, the contractor believes they can get this done within a two-week period of time after everything gets delivered. We're very, very excited about going forward on this. Like I said, it's the last leg, uh, we have the money for it, all the money for this is coming from grants, state grants or federal grants.
Yeah.
No local money, but no operating fee.
Oh, nice. Good.
So we'd love to have your okay to award this, to award this and get it going.
Any questions for Jeff?
We've got two quick questions.
Yep.
Where, was this project advertised when it went out for bid?
We went through the purchasing, we went through the town purchasing.
Does the town purchasing department advertise the bid?
Yes, they use their normal process.
I'm just curious, where do they advertise?
I don't know, is Doug here? Maybe Doug knows where they...
Hey, Doug?
I mean, I look at papers, I see towns putting bid notices out all the time and different websites and...
No particular one, this, uh, one with Earth Contractors, you know, I, the bid was advertised, the...
Yeah, the standard is the current, and then it goes on the town website, and I believe the state website also.
So it does go to the current?
Correct.
And is there, is there a performance bond required in this job?
Yes.
There is? Did we get it this time?
Well, not yet because you haven't approved, right? I mean, the, you execute, we still haven't awarded the contract.
So there was no bid bond?
There was a bid bond, and there'll be a performance bond also, yeah.
If you've got a bid bond, then that's guaranteed, it'll get the performance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? No, we're good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this?
Move to award the bid number two thousand twenty-four oh one to Earth Contractors of Berlin, Connecticut for an amount not to exceed one hundred thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for site work, construction, and associated work related to the outdoor classroom pavilion project at McGee Middle School.
Uh, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, see ya, have a good night.
Agenda number ten, reduction of HAZ Pro contingency for the Willard H V A C project related to abatement. Doug, are you taking this one?
Yes, good evening again. Uh, the scope of the work's been completed related to the H V A C project. We just wanted to reduce some contingency, put it back in the owner's account uh, for future needs related to the project for the remainder of it.
Okay. Yes, we're familiar with this, that's moving forward, that's great. Any questions for Doug?
No, that's wonderful.
We're good? All right, uh, go ahead and, uh, motion, Charlie.
Move to reduce the previously approved project contingency amount of ten percent down to three percent for HazPros Incorporated of West Hartford, Connecticut for asbestos-containing tile and mastic remediation and clearance testing at Willard School for H V A C project, and utilize the seven percent available contingency as additional owner's contingency for the Willard School H V A C project.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Um, uh, okay, um... We are on appointments, yes, so what do we got here first? We have the Central Connecticut Health District, can we take a motion? Nomination, I'm sorry.
I would like to nominate Cynthia Mitchell for the Central Connecticut Health District position.
Thank you. Any other nominations for, for this? Hearing none, uh, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of the nominee?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so, so moved. Um, next nomination for the Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
I would like to nominate Waystand Ackerman for that position.
Thank you. Any other nominations for this? Position, hearing none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so moved. Congratulations on her nomination, uh, Commission for the Aging.
I would like to appoint C. Roger Moss, Jr. for that position.
Thank you. Any other nominations on this one? Hearing none, uh, close the nominations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved. Um, at a Basset District.
Uh, I would like to nominate Mr. John Dunham for that position.
Okay, he's been on there for a while, so he's got some good experience there. Any other nominations on this, for this position? Hearing none, um, we'll close the nominations, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, could we just hold off on this last one for now? Just haven't spoken to this gentleman, just like to touch him a little bit. So we'll just hang on to this for next time? I think that's the last one, right?
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, and where, yeah, so, uh, yes, sir, where are we at now? Oh, yeah, we're at the Town Managers Report. Hallelujah, all right.
All right, how is everyone?
Great, it's all good.
I got a, um, few items, I'll try to go through it quickly. Um, I did have the Knights of Columbus property. I'll follow up with Mr. Podolsky, try to get a contact name and reach out to Wells Fargo. Other than that, uh, we're just, nothing with this one. I'll talk more about it later if you get to it with my annual plans. Um, Brandy G Lane, uh, where we put a speed bump and the two lights.
Yes.
We are, we, meaning Mike and Steve Wood have been working with the neighbors, a couple of neighbors who had had some concerns about the lights.
Right.
And, um, we're just working with them so that they understand they are motion censored and they dim down. Um, but just to get everybody on board so that they don't, you know, um, have a surprise once the lights go up, so, um, these are...
So they're not up yet?
They're not up.
But we're, okay, we're almost there.
They won't be able to complete that process. Speed bump, bumps are installed, you know, this, the solar powered, L E D light fixtures, they're eighteen feet. All's proposed to be installed, um, and once that is done, we go ahead and order them and install them. Um, there is a, um, copy, uh, this is a, in July, and I counsel receive this email about Island Bay Conservation Area.
Oh, yes, yes.
There's a memo from Maureen to me, which I, um, copied, all of you, you should have the hard copy with it. I won't go through the whole thing, but line is they investigated the town staff, and there's definitely violation of the conservation area.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Uh, the Water Course Commission, Inland Metland Conservation Commission, they have not met in August, so their next meeting, they're going to take it up and determine how to proceed.
Okay. Could, could you, uh, answer that, uh, complaint? Do you still have that? Yeah.
Person who emailed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Just tell, because he had sent one, and I, I think...
That was in August, we were not meeting.
Yeah.
And you had responded and said...
Yeah, I think I said, yeah, so just tell him that that's, yeah, that's ready to, you know, we're going to look at it.
Okay.
So he'll be...
No problem.
Uh, informed, yeah.
Um, there's a meeting scheduled, uh, has to do with the Gold Star Memorial signage, directional signs.
Yeah, good.
All of you have copied, but mostly with the veterans, Pete and Charles. Uh, we have been working with the D O T, D O T is pretty much, and asks us to go ahead and come up with the, the signs that, on the town roads, uh, we can get about two of them, and they'll work, the state will work on the Route Nine and other state right-of-way. So the first step is we'll have a meeting.
Meeting.
Um, Peter and Charles, and they are on board with where...
They are going.
Signs, you know, one is, and when you come off Route Nine, um, Syria and Christian Lane, directional sign there, and, and the D O T is allowing us to do, put a sign on Farmington Ave., which is there.
Oh, nice.
As a town sign.
Oh.
So we, we just need to work on it, and then also to determine the size and, you know, it, something appropriate for the town.
Sure, sure.
Not so big, so just F I I, but keep it going, I'll keep you informed.
And Peter knows about it?
Yeah, yeah, he's...
And Charles?
Yeah, and the P D is involved in the signage, all of that, right?
Great.
Um, the new tablets.
Yes.
I think, uh...
I gotta get there.
Dr. Russo came and picked up his tablet.
Yeah, I gotta get mine.
I think the two of you, I would suggest that use the old one. Just keep using your old one until the, because...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Couple of more meetings, right?
That's fine.
And then the new folks will get the new tablets, but all of you...
I gotta get them.
When you get some time.
Yeah, I gotta get it.
Come and get your new tablet, and Cindy will set you up. It's already set up, but give you a tour and that you can be on your way, all right?
Yes.
Um, blighted property, um, remember we had a list of blighted properties, not so many.
Yes.
Uh, the good news is, uh, Paul, who's the zoning enforcement officer, reached out to them. Every owner is working with us, uh, no one's ignoring.
Oh, nice.
Um, you know, we have Elton Road, and there's another property that they are working with the owner directly on the sale. But, uh, other than that, like, kind of, kind of like a sand and stone property. But all the others are willing to work with the town. Again, the goal is not to find people, goal is to try and get the blighted property fixed.
Sure.
So some of them are a little slower than others, but no one's ignoring because if they ignore, we start finding them, and they know that. So that's one. Just got a note from, I think I'm informed, told you, may I, about the generator that we prepared many months ago for the Berlin Housing Center.
Yes.
For the senior center.
Yeah.
They never picked it up, so, but Joe sent me a note today saying...
What?
Yes.
Crazy.
He hired an engineer to draft a set of stamped drawings showing the location, the pad, utility connections, conduit trenches, penetration foundation walls, and installation transfers, which is for the building. The purpose of the drawings is to obtain plan approval, location, generator, and obtain an necessary building permits for installation. So he's on it now.
How many months later?
We did it like in January, right?
I thought so. It was urgent, too, as I recall.
Uh, let's hope we can get it done before this...
Yes, that's what we would...
It's ready to go whenever they...
Is it, yeah, it's ready to go, yeah.
It's tested, and it's sort of, uh, hired a group to come and run it, test it, provide output, all of that.
I hate to say, I thought it was kind of already done, because as we get into hurricane season and storms and potential losing power.
Yeah.
Okay.
Huh, wonder if something else got lost in the Fedwire transfer system. Jeez.
All right.
Oh, my God.
Um, do want to let you know that the Neighborhood Assistance Act?
Yes. Peter's laughing. Don't laugh, Peter, come on, what are you laughing at?
So the good news is, um, the Kensington Congregational Church, they got the grant last year. They got, they applied this year, got another one for twenty oh five.
Oh, nice.
And I, I didn't, I was not sure about the Friends of Wodinton Meeting House. They applied, and they've approved, uh, to eighty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay, good.
They got to work with companies to, um...
Okay.
Give them the money and take the cat, tax credit, but that's a...
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's great, okay.
F I I, they'll keep working on that. And the, um, the last one is, I emailed this to you, you should have hard copies at Fiscal Twenty-three Department, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
Departmental update.
Yes.
There's a lot of information, you know, we don't get a chance to talk a lot about operations and what people do, but I urge you to please read it. Uh, so, for example, um, there are a lot of interesting stuff about economic development, just to recap, how many ribbon cuttings and new businesses, um, lots of expansions that we did. If you read through the fire department, it's impressive, the, you know, as a volunteer group, how many units of training they do.
Yeah.
Uh, all the responses they make, um, you know, rescue medical hazardous conditions, you know, public service. Just, just to recap for the year, we, we don't even realize that they do all this all the time. And EMS services, they all require to take all these training. Um, Jim did a really nice job sort of recapping that. I also would urge you to look at the fleet garage and the things that they do. One of the things I would point out, the average age of the fleet is thirteen point two years. So, I mean, I'm going to start working with Jim to try and reduce that to ten, and part of it could be getting rid of some of the older ones to an auction. We got some cars that nobody's sitting, because the older ones are in the shop all the time.
Get rid of them.
Get rid of them. So take a look at that. Other one is, you know, golf course accomplishments, a good year for the golf course. We did a lot of upgrades, enhancements, renovations for the driving range, you know, treatment of ponds, you know, course renovations, the clubhouse. It's looking really nice. You have, you have been there.
Yeah, they did a great job there. Of course, looking great.
This year with the weather guards on our side, the greens have been beautiful. Yeah, if you go there, it's like a private country club. It's very green, lush, looks really nice.
Yeah, we couldn't get much more rain, right?
Yeah, I know. Same with the highway department, all the stuff that they do regularly, nobody notices, you know, catch basin maintenance and drainage and culverts and, and all the roadwork that we did. So take a look at that. I T upgrades, this is a thing that kept me awake a lot about servers and security issues, they're all done. Same with the, and the library had a lot of renovations this year, new carpeting, new equipment, and I'm just going through this very quickly, there's a lot in there.
Oh, there's a lot, I looked through some of it, yeah.
And a kudos to Maureen and the team from the C O C D, that was a lot of effort. Maureen, Jim Mahoney, Jennifer Capola, all of them worked on it. Everybody's help, especially the P O, the Planning and Zoning Commission, all volunteers. So those are some of the highlights. Happy to answer any questions. Town Clerk's Office got some amount of stats in here, all the stuff that they are doing, social and youth services. It, it's a robust town, there's a lot going on here, and you don't hear because they go, they, they happen, they just do it every day, and, you know, most of the time I hear only when things don't work, or when things go bad. You get the calls the same way.
Yeah.
Thing is not right, you get the call, but.
That happens.
You got to think about hundreds of other activities, functions, that just seamlessly happen, paths and wrecks to other things, this.
Right, that's true.
Day in, day out. So, look at it, happy to answer any questions you may have, but I would urge you to just go through it when you get a chance.
It's a lot of info, I would look through it, yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on, it's hard to keep up with it all, but it's all good.
Yeah.
All good stuff.
That's.
That's it?
All I have of the update.
All right, good. Special community meetings, no, nothing, right? No special reports, right? No. Council Communications, what do you folks have? Anything, Council Communications, anything? Peter?
Yeah, I got.
Yes, yes, sir.
I just want to apologize for the glare off my forehead all the.
The fade's on here.
Yeah, apology accepted, it's okay. No, it's up, it's fine. Donna, anything?
No, I'm hoping to be able to see you guys in person soon.
Good, get better soon, you know, you're having a fun time. Hey, just two real quick things, oh, anything, Sandy, Charlie? Two quick things if we could, if you guys agree to this. I, I just have a question, and Roche, you could look into it, but I've had complaints from folks, and it's due to a couple of these projects along the Berlin Turnpike, the Holly Court folks, just how we, and Maureen's gone, I know, but how we advertise. So I know we put it in the, in the Berlin, New Britain Herald, which has a four hundred fifty-person circulation in Berlin, and we don't put it in the Berlin Citizen, which is nine thousand people. So I know there was a reason for that.
I have a note into Maureen.
Okay, and we're gonna, so we're gonna put it in the Berlin Citizen, too?
Yeah, I, I'll find out the real, I think part of the reason had to do with.
Yeah, wouldn't have.
A lot of turnover there, Nick, who was actually.
Yeah, he's gone now, huh, Nick?
We find out the real.
Yeah.
There were times that we would send it, they would put it.
Okay, yeah.
Reason, but.
We got to, yeah, we got to do that, because, you know, I mean, four hundred fifty people circulation.
I get it.
No one sees it, right?
To duplicate efforts a little bit to see if the Citizen will still continue.
Yes. Yeah.
It's an issue of them not putting it in at least this.
Well, yeah.
They should.
Right, yeah, right, I mean. Yeah. So if we could do that, the.
Planning and zoning, though, don't they have to advertise a certain amount of time in the end?
Yeah, I, I think there's, there is something with that, Kate.
With the, the.
Yes.
I run into that problem with my legal notice.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, but there.
That's where the issue sometimes is.
Right.
But I, I understand what you're saying, it's just.
Because there's, there's other Berlin town notices in the Citizen.
Yeah, so.
For different things, right?
Depends upon, I can't advertise a lot of my stuff in there because of the time.
The timeframe.
They need it by Wednesday.
Yeah.
For business for the following Thursday.
Yeah.
So if you know seven days in advance, you can, but there was another reason.
We got to figure it out, it's just.
But when you think about that.
Yes.
You have to tell them Wednesday, a week ahead before.
Right.
And then planning, zoning, probably like Town Council, you have to advertise it like five days or seven days in advance. They had to prepare that almost two weeks in advance just to get it into the Berlin season.
They might have to do that, I don't know, even if they don't have the agenda.
They meet every two weeks.
But even if they put at least the meeting date, and I, I, something.
Okay.
I just don't think, yeah, no, I, I, I think you're right, I think that's part of the reason now that you're saying that, because of the timeframe with the Citizen, I do believe that is it, but we got to figure out how to put something in there, if it's not the official legal notice, I, I don't, you know, maybe we could work on a, something just so people know it's coming and potentially what's on there. It's not an official notice, we could put anything we want in there, right? Obviously, it's not the official notice. That's all, because they're, you know, they missed some meetings, and, you know, they look in the Citizen, they don't see it, they don't, right?
Because a lot of people will say, well, why isn't it on Facebook? Why isn't it on this site? Why isn't it there? Why is it in the paper? Half the people don't look at the paper, you know, there's.
Yeah.
It's just the comments that you hear from the people in town, why don't we get more into, you know, the, the media age, or more advanced with technology to notify people? And I'm like, I don't know what else to tell you, go and, go and check the website, the agendas are all there.
It's always there.
Right, right.
But, you know, they're looking for something to be given to them, and it doesn't work that way.
No, it's not all on us.
Notices are always on the, under the spotlight, and it says legal notices, and any legal notices that we put on the website also go under there, and then the legal notices also go under that event. But if they're not looking, if they don't know about it, I get it.
Yeah, that's the, that's a good problem. And then finally, how do we, how would we go about refunding those folks the four hundred sixty dollars, the, the Holly Court residents? I, I think they have a valid complaint, they put in, they filed some papers to have the, that amendment changed that led to the houses, right, being proposed on the Berlin Turnpike in front of Holly Court, but the town, as soon as they put it in, the town did it on their own, and they collected, you know, money from their residents on the street, you know, a group of the residents, and it was like a waste of money for them, and, and I don't.
We asked them to put it.
They just did it on their own, but, but immediately after they put it in, the town was going to do it anyway, they amended, I think they amended that amendment that, that created the little home, so I don't know how we could do it, but we need to do it.
Four hundred and sixty dollars?
Sixty dollars, it's got to go back to.
Four sixty.
Four hundred and sixty dollars. I, I think they deserve it back, I've been talking to those folks.
Submit anything, any receipt, anything?